Call the meeting to order. Mr. Guston, please lead us in the pledge.
We just did the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Haste, Jeff, Guston, Zadra, Sforza, George, Azzie, Keschel.
This time, we'll go to public comment. Fire Chief Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask the Prevention Bureau and specifically Fire Marshal Joan Presley to join me, please. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. Next week, this community, this department, and this city will be losing a key member of the leadership team of the Reno Fire Department and a public servant for this community. Fire Marshal Joan Presley will be retiring next week. Joan Presley has been in public service for approximately 36 years, working 10 years for the federal government before being hired by Washoe County in 1986. She was hired as a fire inspector by the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District in 1989 and became a City of Reno employee upon consolidation in 2000. In 2001, she was promoted to the rank of captain, and in 2009, she became the first female fire marshal for the City of Reno. She has actively abdicated fire and life safety programs through her commitments not only to the citizens of Reno but as a member of a larger fire prevention community in Nevada, working cooperatively with on a variety of fire and life safety programs too numerous to mention here. For the last several years, she has dedicated her efforts to wildland-urban interface safety, working with like-minded professionals throughout the state. It has been my privilege and my honor to work with Fire Marshal Presley. She is a true professional, and she has made the City of Reno a safer place to live, work, and visit, and will be missed by the entire Reno Fire Department, this city, and this community, and her fellow professionals. At this time, I'd like to present her a flag that was flown over the City of Reno along with an accompanying certificate. The chief's commendation for 26 years of dedicated service. And lastly, we had a plaque made that has her original captain's badge and her fire marshal's badge, as well as her helmet shield, and the plaque reads, "Fire Marshal Joan Presley, for 26 years of dedicated service, 1986 to 2012. Thank you from the City of Reno. You've made the City of Reno a safer place to live." Thank you, Joan. Fire Marshal Joan Presley.
It's certainly been a privilege and an honor to work for the city. I thank you so much for your support of fire prevention and the Fire Department. I know that you will continue to support the Fire Prevention Division as we move forward. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind you that we have an Urban-Wildland Interface Conference starting Monday at the Grand Sierra. I will be so pleased to see some of you there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Manager, thank you so much.
Chief, just a minute. Joan, I'm so sorry you didn't get the message, but all retirements have been suspended. And Chief Pitts has an order to arrest you immediately if you don't change your mind. So, take the consideration, whatever. Congratulations, you've done a hell of a job, you've been a great leader, and we certainly appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Cecilia, I can't give you the extra time. You get three minutes. If I have to give you more time, I have to give everybody more time.
After such a nice presentation, I don't like to be an appeal and a complaint.
You just go ahead, we don't take it that way.
Okay. Cecilia Wharton, over 80, six generations of Renoites. We must like it here. My main complaint or appeal is regarding my sewer bill. My mother and father bought property over 50 years ago up in the university area. One-two-bedroom apartment, six one-bedrooms. That property is older now. My bill is, this year, $2,696. Just, I bought two bills, just $2,000. It was $1,272. We know when we build, there's got to be fees and costs. We expect maintenance through the years. We know things go up, but this seems out of sight. I would like the people at the top, who make the rules and the regulations, to consider, everything doesn't fit in one growth, you know, one area. I've talked to people, Kim Kilgore was the one that recommended me coming here, but the people at the top, I hope, would see the whole picture of things and not just one-size-fits-all. In the real estate department, like I said, I used to think that was the highest bill. Well, we know there's been a lot to bring that down. I also do get a little senior discount, though, and if I keep those rentals under $550, I get a little discount. So, right now, if I had a mortgage on this property, after 50 years of my family having this, what is not a lot now, a piece of property, I would not be able to have it, and my sewer bill is my main complaint. So, I'm out of step, and I'm glad I've lived when I lived, and I say my prayers for the present and the future generations. That's all I have to say, but this was a good article, not pertaining to me, but by Randy Thompson, two weeks ago in the Gazette. I was shocked to hear that when someone wants to build something here in Reno, our costs are twice as much as Denver, four times as much as Salt Lake City. And she gave an example of a laundromat with 30 machines would cost $792,000, just to begin with the permits and everything. Thank you. I don't know what will happen, but for businesses to open, and like I said, I don't, 50 years, I would hope that people that have paid for so many years might get a little drop and let all the newcomers with the growth and everything maybe take a little higher step. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Flansburgh, if you would meet with her and get her information before she leaves, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Voskamp. Good morning.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, City Council members, I'm here today to invite you to Fire Ops 101. It's the first-ever Fire Ops that we put on, and we're looking forward to it. We would like to invite you to it. Yeah, I believe the invitation is on your desk. Fire Ops 101 is a series of events that allows you to experience the job of a firefighter. You don't get to watch. We're actually going to put you in turnouts. We're going to put you on a fire engine. We're going to take you inside a burning building. We're going to let you handle mock patients. We're even going to have to put you in a room with a full arrest.
Do you really expect us to fall for this?
Well, you and I, Mr. Mayor, you and I will watch. I'm not going to allow you to go into it, but...
We're going into a burning building? I don't know anybody...
It'll be completely safe. We'll take you in, we'll hold your hand every step of the way. But, this is, it's just simple exercises that we want to show you. There's nothing outlandish, it's not going to be multiple casualty incidents, it's not going to be like a plane crash like at the air races. These are just calls that every day that your firefighters go on, simple car wreck, simple room contents fire, simple full arrest. These are calls that, an engine company can go on multiple times in a day. The Reno Fire Department and the Reno Firefighters Association are hoping you can find the time to attend. It's going to be October 20th. It will be a mostly all-day event. We'll feed you, we'll clothe you, so to speak, put you in turnouts and everything else. We, as Reno firefighters, believe that between the City Council and the Reno firefighters, we've made amazing strides in overcoming what a lot of people have said have been insurmountable odds, deconsolidation, budget, we can go down the list. The gray in my beard, I'm sure, attests to some of that. But I think one of the things that this is, is another step in the process for us to continue to provide the best level of fire protection for our citizens that we protect, and a public-safety-minded City Council, which you've proved to be. I know that some of you are leaving and moving on, but that's okay. We still would love to have you out. We probably should have done this years ago, but bigger fires were burning, we all know, we were tied up in other things. But before you go, we'd like to give you one last taste of what you've accomplished for the Reno Fire Department. So if you could come out, we'd really appreciate it. We hope to see you there.
Good. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Angela Watson.
Hi, I'm Angela Watson, and thank you for hearing me. I've come about the agenda item J3. I've just recently learned about it, and I live in the neighborhood, and I'm really concerned about the park because I have children, and they attend a school near this park. And so I am in favor of a playground, but I'm in great opposition of the restricted hours. I would like to see the hours in place that my children could use it, and so I would like to put into request the hours of the Our Ladies of Snow's playground versus our public playground that would begin when their day ends, that it ends at 3:30 so that my kids can use it on the way home from school. I think it would be awesome to have a playground where there does not exist one currently, but not if my kids can't use it. And that's it.
Thank you very much. William Perchard? There you are, I was looking for you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and City Council members, I'm here to promote and invite you all to the 22nd Annual Reno Celtic Celebration, as you can probably see from my attire. It will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, October 6th and 7th, at Bartley Ranch Regional Park. The festival will feature pipe bands, Klan tents, Scottish and Irish dancers, historical reenactors, Celtic animals, vendors, kids' games, and more. Some of the newer attractions that we have this year, we have Clydesdale horses amongst our Celtic animals. We have Celtic session musicians. I don't know if you all know, but it's becoming very popular at Keel Irish Pub to have a free-for-all jam session of Celtic musicians. They all come down and play from week to week, and so we've incorporated that into our festival. If you don't know what Celtic culture is, some of you are familiar with Scotland, Ireland, and Wales, but the festival also celebrates Brittany, Cornwall, the Isle of Man, and Galicia, which are all Celtic nations. Something else that we are incorporating into our festival is a Saturday Night Kaylee, which is Gaelic for "party," which is at our hotel, Host Hotel, that is Wildflower Village. And we have really worked hard, the board and I have really worked hard to get the word out to other communities. We have been advertising in festivals, and we are telling clans to come and hold their annual general meeting here as a way of spurring tourism. So, we'd like to have you come out and check us out. And as users of Bartley Ranch, we very much appreciate the brave efforts of firefighters who really helped to save the park, and we were very worried and very appreciative that they saved it, so. And Mayor Keschel, I have a pair of tickets to you, for you, and we'd love to see you out there in a kilt.
I think you'll have to explain to them what a pub is. I don't think you'll see me in a kilt, but, well, we won't say no to anything. Mr. Markell, do you have something to say? It's very nice of you to apologize, Mark. You ran over the poor lady's feet.
Sorry.
That was good. No, you did a great job. If y'all don't know it, I pick on Mark a lot, so...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Mark.
Thank you. My name is Mark. I'm a insurgent resident. I'm here to be, to show people what happens when you get in a car with a drunk driver. I just want to be an example, just want to be an example of what happens when you get in a car with a drunk driver. I, I rolled, we rolled eight times, 150 feet, and I wasn't wearing my seatbelt. I got jacked in, and it landed on my head, and I was dead at the scene. But God willing me, allowed to show people and be an example of what can happen when you drink and drive, and when you get in a car with a drunk driver. And I know, I know that kids can't voice their opinions, but you grownups, please don't drive your kids in the car when you're drunk. They have no, no, no say about it. I can't think of the word, but please don't put them through this, and, and, don't drink and drive, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Very good message. Thank you. All right, I'll close the public comments. I'll close the public comments section. We'll go to item A5, approval of the agenda. Before we do, item J4, staff's requested it be pulled. Item to be continued. Item F6, J4 was pulled. Continued items till the next meeting is item F6, F7, Bella Vista Ranch, and item F5, Riverside Drive and Joan Street abandonment. So, we've pulled in those. Then, continuing.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office. On the public hearing ones, we will have to open them at the appropriate time and continue them.
Yes.
So, we can't pull them off the agenda?
No, we have to open them and continue them, right. Presentations. David Morton, item D1. Public comment, 12 noon. Public hearings, item F1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Time certain, 2:30 for Curb System LLC is a time certain. Any other changes or suggestions? Motion?
Move to approve of those changes, Mr. Mayor?
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6, approval of minutes for August 29, September 12. Have a motion to approve, have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, case disbursements. Mr. Heschel.
Madam Clerk, none, none for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. George, Mr. Guston. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we go to item D. Item D1, presentations. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, sir. David Morton, Director of the Reno Housing Authority. I've given each of the council people a set of this. I'm not going to go through all of it. In five minutes, I don't have that much time, but I thought I had five, not three.
Five minutes?
In any of them...
You take your time, we'll make it. You're not public comment, you're...
I appreciate that. I think you'll be impressed if you look at what we've accomplished. At your direction, we got into this principally because Jessica wanted us involved in Oliver Montello, but then in NSP 1, Jody, the city staff, Dwight, Sharon, were both on a committee helping us plan what we did with that. We went into the Good Neighbor Program, which you approved. Then the Housing Authority took the lead in developing the NSP 2 program. But all of that came out of your efforts to involve us in something we hadn't traditionally done. For us to be dealing with purchase of foreclosed properties, rehabbing, selling to middle-income families, not low-income families, but middle-income families, is not the traditional Housing Authority program. We've been incredibly pleased with what's happened, and what I wanted to do is just share some of the highlights with you. We had four target areas, and again, three of those were set originally by city staff working with Washoe County, Sparks, and Reno. One of those was instead, principally the Sky Vista neighborhood. If you look at all the stars, all the notations, you'll see we had a variety of programs, but all of those are houses that the Housing Authority bought, rehabbed, made to a high-energy-level efficiency. We've ziriskaped most of the lawn so that they're really just stellar in their appearance. Many have been sold. We have a leased-own program, and we have a rental program. We had to spend 25% of the money on rentals to low-income people, which we're maintaining, but the rest of it's being sold, either leased-own or outright homeownership, to middle-income people. And again, that's just an important point I wanted to make. You've got more detail in your packet, but this gives the area, and just to show the audience a few of the photos, these are all houses we bought. Many of them were not in good condition. We have fixed those up. We have, again, ziriskaped with the approval of the Homeowner Association so that we reduce water, we're not wasting water, we've got very attractive yards, and, again, we've been incredibly well-received in the neighborhood. Sun Valley, basically Highland Ranch, is same principle. You'll see a huge number, a large number of houses there that we bought. In every case, they were foreclosures. We didn't go out and buy, these were foreclosures where people had been forced to leave. We had to buy them under strict terms set by the federal government for the programs that we had. But again, all of them look incredible. I defy you to go by any of them and not be impressed. Again, just a sample of those, and you see the quality of the work we've done. We've spent some extra money on landscaping, because, again, we wanted to show off. We wanted to have, when people look at that, they think, "Wow, this really looks nice in our neighborhood," and that's exactly the reaction we're getting. We've had people come over and tell us how glad they are that we bought one because they know this is the quality we're going to put it in. Sparks, same thing. Now, originally, the area west of Pyramid was part of what was NSP 1. The east, we expanded when we got our NSP 2 grant. But again, all of the, all of the stars, the indicators, are properties we bought and rehabbed and sold or rented. Again, just a sample of the houses. Oliver Montello was a neighborhood the City Council had designated as a high priority for activity. Jessica particularly took the lead. I never will forget her telling me, "Dave, we need to take a drive and just go over to the neighborhood," and, you know, clearly, it was a neighborhood that needed a lot of help. You've put all sorts of money and effort into this with code enforcement, with just the park, a number of things. But part of this was for us to buy houses originally with a special-purpose grant that Senator Reed enabled. But we've added to that a host of things. So, again, you drive through the Oliver Montello neighborhood, we've had, we expanded it in the NSP 2 to include some areas outside of that, but the three houses that you see there are all part of the original Oliver Montello neighborhood, and they're stellar. I mean, everything we've done, it's just very attractive. The neighbors love us. Again, we have done all of this, I think, in a way that would make you proud. We've always felt like, I've always felt that we were stewards of federal monies or programs that we needed to make sure every taxpayer, while they may not agree politically with what's being done, they would at least applaud the way we're spending that money and the quality of the work and what we're doing for the neighborhood. And out of 56 grantees around the country who got this similar award, and nobody in Nevada got one except us, we're number, I mean, we're leading the pack. We're number three in our expenditures under that program. You can't get much better than that. We're, as of September 1, we had spent 93, 95.3% of the grant. We're actually at 96.6% today. We're just, we'll meet the full guidelines for this and be able to continue this forward after February, at least on an ongoing basis. It won't go indefinitely because we're losing money every time we sell a house. We're not making money, that wasn't the purpose. The purpose was to put money into the community, which is the next point I want to make. We have spent over $20 million on purchasing foreclosed houses in this community. We have helped shore up the market. We've paid real estate fees for most of this. A few, we got directly from HUD, but the bulk of them, we've used local real estate agents to both buy and sell. We've used local appraisers. And as far as the, what's the total number of houses we bought since November is 226 properties when you add it together. But what I'm most proud of is the fact that we've used local contractors to do the work. I didn't set up a, you know, huge staff and do all this. We've had people that we hired to basically determine the work that needed to be done, and then we've taken bids for that, and we've put the money back into the community. Again, you see the results. Almost $5 million we've put into rehab in the community. Again, our work, we, and I don't want to sound boastful in this, but HUD actually has featured us in a national training program, and that's what the video is, the DVD. I didn't put this together. HUD sent a team down here through the Enterprise Foundation to actually do a study. I thought we were going to be a bit player in a bigger deal. As it turned out, it's 90% about us and about our properties and our neighborhoods and tenants, and incredibly well-done. I've got extras if there's anybody in the audience who would like one, but it's quite impressive. NARO, which is the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, has given us an award, it's the highest award they give for properties. It's called the Award of Excellence, and this shows you the, again, on the ziriskate, water-saving measures we've taken on those properties. So, not only are they attractive, but we're saving all sorts of water in the process. So, we're extremely proud of what we've done. Again, with, the bottom line, though, is none of this would have happened if the City Council had not expressed the confidence and willingness to entrust us with this program. So, I want to thank you all very much. I appreciate what you've done. I'll answer any questions if you like, but again, we're really pleased with what's happening. I think the neighbors, the community, everybody feels good if they're aware of what we've done.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
David, and I just appreciate the council listening to the presentation. One of the things I wish David had done was showed the condition of the houses before the Housing Authority went and rehabilitated these properties. If you drive by Oliver Montello, wow. I mean, what a huge difference. The kids are playing in the park again, the rehabilitation of the houses, but like Dave said, over $5 million pumped into the economy, putting local people to work, rehabilitating those homes. But 226 homes purchased by this Housing Authority. And Dave's very modest, but we are the highest-producing Housing Authority in Region 9, and he, we keep telling him on the board, "Mr. Mayor, we're scared he's going to retire. We won't let him." I mean, he gets offers all around the country all the time. It's just been tremendous. I can't say enough great things about this Housing Authority. When you have neighborhoods coming in begging us, begging a Housing Authority to come in and rehabilitate homes, that says something. And I would implore anyone in this community to go by our public... this community to go by our public housing projects, um, because I know public housing has a stigma attached to it, but you see our public housing projects here in the city, and they're amazing. They're well-kept, great community, great resident councils out there. It's, it's just tremendous, and I, I really want to applaud David and the Housing Authority staff for what's been done here. It's absolutely incredible.
Thank you so much.
And one more thing, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, this was very competitive on these grants for NSP 2. And we partnered, just a little bragging rights here, we partnered, uh, the city of Reno, and I want to thank our staff, too. Uh, Jody, tremendous, tremendous job, and the rest of the housing staff here. Um, because it was a very competitive process, NSP 2. I can't remember how many, um, grants were awarded, but we were in competition with Southern Nevada, Mr. Mayor, and they received nothing. And we received over $20 million. And I don't remember if, you remember that brouhaha, but that says a lot about, uh, the Housing Authority and its staff, um, for what they've been able to accomplish. So, thank you.
Appreciate that.
You've done an outstanding job, you and your board, and, uh, uh, thank you, Jessica, for being on it, uh, all these years. And, uh, you've done an outstanding job. Appreciate it, and keep it up. And you heard the announcement earlier about all the tournaments have been suspended.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else got a comment?
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. I know David has been really a breath of fresh air for the years that he's served here. He always gets after it, he always gets done, and he always produces great results. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
You do an outstanding job. All right, now we'll go to the consent agenda. Any item, Jonah Paul, for discussion?
E13, please.
Which one?
E13.
A13.
E8, Mr. Mayor.
A8?
E10 and 12.
10 and 12. Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
A13, D8, G10 and 12.
E10.
E10 and 12. Any others?
Move to approve the remainder?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. A13.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is for the funding of EDON, and I would like to have Mr. Mike Kazmersky come up and, um, just kind of briefly, um, help highlight the new EDON and the new regional approach, um, the much more efficient, effective, um, and zealous approach, um, with results that are happening, um, because there's a greater request attached to it.
Well, thank you, uh, council members, Audra, and council members and mayor and staff, uh, for this opportunity. One, to thank you.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Mike Kazmersky, CEO of EDON, Economic Development Authority, Western Nevada.
Thank you.
To thank you, first off, for your support of EDON and what we're doing. As you know, jobs and, and, um, economic development are something that everyone talks about, but it's, it's pretty exciting to watch this community really get behind an effort to move the ball forward in creating jobs through attracting, retaining, and entrepreneurial development as laid out in the strategic plan that, uh, we had a lot of people help us put together, and I think you've got that as one of your handouts. Uh, we have built our program around this plan, requested funding support around this plan, uh, earlier in the year, um, as we did request funding from the state, uh, as well. And the state was unable to fund us at a level that we had requested, so portions of the plan are currently unfunded. Um, that said, I have, um, laid out in that short memo, three items that I think we really want to try and tackle this year. The sooner the better. With 25,000 people unemployed, I think we can really get some additional traction if we were to find some funding to support three specific projects. Uh, one is the postcard campaign, and we've got in your handouts there, the, the postcards we have sent out so far, the first three. And what we're finding is a pretty exciting, um, increase in our web activity, up to 70% from California over the last 90 days since we've launched this postcard campaign to, to over 4,000 businesses in high-growth areas in, in California. And we're seeing not just, not only direct phone calls as a result of this, but increased web activity. We'd like to ask for an additional, uh, support to continue this campaign for another 90 days. Um, as you know, the SED certification piece is something we've really worked hard on to this point, and appreciate, um, really, the community and the region's support for that initiative. It's gonna take more work to get that certification done, and we're asking for a little bit of support, about half of what we think it'll cost to get us over the finish line, as far as getting that updated SEDs process complete, as we work with Western Nevada Development Authority. And finally, our retention effort. As we have launched, really, EDON has put more energy behind retention, and, and, um, my personal belief is the companies, the most important companies out there are not the ones you're attracting, but the ones you already have. And putting resources, energy into assisting and supporting our existing companies, so that they can grow, they can expand, they can connect with and give us leads. We brought on board a VP for Retention, Nancy McCormick, uh, many of you know, uh, has done an outstanding job at his finding herself, getting behind her ready. Uh, she really needs some, um, administrative support that we're unable to provide at this time. So, this would bring on a part-time person to help her with what I think is an aggressive goal of going out, visiting with, talking to, identifying problems with our local primary employers, and then resolving those issues. And oftentimes, that visit is just the start of what could be hours of days of work in order to help these companies succeed in our region. And that really is just the three areas, um, that we've identified that we could use additional support on, and, and I open it to questions.
Thanks, Mike. Um, we have, we, the city of Reno have, for a long time, of course, been, um, a support, um, partner in, in the efforts for EDON. Um, but this truly is a new EDON, um, and Mike has been here just a short while, not even, what are we, maybe six, seven months?
Ten, ten months, yeah.
Ten, ten months.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Um, and already, to do, um, clearly, we, um, had on our agenda last week in this for the, um, regional partnership, um, and, and becoming involved in that activity. They're just, it's huge. But we do have, um, a greater need. The county stepped up its, um, um, revenue support, um, significantly for EDON this year for these very reasons, as did Sparks. And, um, I would like to be able to give direction, um, to the city manager to, um, find some additional funding support. And I will throw the first $10,000 into the pot. I will dedicate my entire discretionary fund, um, to go as additional funding, and look for that to be at least, um, doubled, um, if not tripled, another 20 grand somehow found, um, within the, the city operations to, um, to bring this to fruition. The downtown piece alone is exactly what we have been attempting to do for quite a long time. Um, and now that we've got a new partner to work with, we need to throw some dollars toward that to help make that happen. Um, the, the piece right across the street from us with the university, um, and, and trying to build that into a mechanism and a vehicle where the university students will come downtown, not just for the living, but for, um, the learning experiences that are coming with the Apple, um, um, opportunities that are coming along the way. We need to get some more, um, support to, to EDON, um, and build up our partnership with them.
Any other questions?
So, that will be, um, future agenda items. Um, we can't make an additional amount today other than, you know, um, I will have on the agenda for next week, um, our next meeting, at least $10,000, and an agenda item for us to discuss, um, with staff, where we might be able to, um, find some additional funding.
So, you're looking for a total of $70,000?
Well, we're already, we're looking for, looking for a total of 100. 30 more. And, and I'll provide 10 of it.
Okay.
I'll give my entire discretionary funding.
All right. You want to make a motion to?
Yeah. So, move to accept the staff report for the, the 70, um, thousand that we're already, um, 71 to 50, actually, um, that we're already allocating, and with the understanding that we'll be, um, looking to give direction to staff to come up with an additional 30. 10 of it already identified.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, more housekeeping than anything, E10 and E12. The company, DND, I do business with them in my other private business, but I spend more with them than they spend with me. So, I just wanted to say that, in terms of transparency, that even though I do business with them, this is not some, I've spent much more money with them than they have spent with me. And I just wanted to be transparent about that, that, uh, have no agenda as far as they're concerned. So, I would move to approve E10 and E12.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, number eight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's, I just pulled that because the city attorney asked me to. I think we need to pull it and bring it back.
Yeah, Tracy Chason, Reno City Attorney's Office. Um, staff and legal need to bring back alternatives on this. This isn't ready for council's approval. So, if you just pull it off the agenda, we'll take care of it and bring it back.
Okay. Have a motion from, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now, we will go to public hearing. Let's open up, uh, Madam Secretary, but we're gonna go with item F6, or F5 first, uh, for continuance. Um, Madam Secretary, have any, all the notices have been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. We received one letter of concern from John Smacker and Kim Bogley, and there is a request to continue this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, is that F6?
F5.
F5.
Okay.
Did I say 6?
No, that was me, sorry.
I thought I said 5.
Mr. Mayor, this, this is in Ward 1, and it was, this was originally a request for abandonment of, of half of the alley, but there, there, there's reason, and council advised me before, just before the meeting, that they received two letters. They want to try to work it out that they, for the total abandonment.
Right.
The difference right now is a couple parking spaces, and I think, uh, with the three parties getting together, they probably can do that. So, I'm gonna move for a continuance of F5.
To the next meeting?
Uh, Mr. Gordon, is that next meeting?
Yes.
That'd be October 10th?
Yes, please.
Till October 10th, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to item F6. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, proper notice was given, no correspondence received.
Okay, there's, they want to continue this.
Um, we did have the town hall on this, um, last, I believe it was last Tuesday with the neighborhood, as council-directed. Um, so, got some feedback from that, but we need the agreements done, um, and they won't be done until the next meeting. So, I'd go ahead and, uh, continue this until, I believe, October 10.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chason, talking to staff, if council could give till the second meeting in October due to the workload, that would be appreciated.
To the second meeting?
There would still be time for this council to hear everything.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as it's done.
Yep. All right.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F7. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Oh, I'm thinking F7. Oh, my God. That was F7, Mr. Mayor, not F6, what I just did.
Well.
F6 was on the liquor license space.
Yes, okay.
We still continue that, though.
Yes, we've already continued.
You can leave that one until next year sometime.
Now, you want to handle F7?
Just kidding. Uh, yes, F7. Um, my comments from before, Mr. Mayor. I, October 10th, is that the date?
Tracy Chason, yes, Mr. Mayor. And a 2 o'clock time certain would be appreciated as well.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
And I'll make the second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, why did we give a 2 o'clock instead of later?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna refer that to Mr. Thomas, 'cause he requested that of me.
Okay, never mind. I got a motion and second. I got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're back to item F11. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, proper notice was given, no correspondence received.
Mr. Mayor, council members, um, Mr. City Manager, Jody Royal-Goodwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator for the city of Reno. Each year, we come before you at this time with the public hearing for the Consolidated Annual Action Plan, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, sorry, and, um, to provide an overview of what we've done with the, the HUD funding for the fiscal year. And, like I said, the CAPR, as the plan is typically called, is primarily to cover the items funded and activities funded with the HUD allocations. However, I'm including the trust funds because we use those so intricately with the home funding. And that means that we use those to support the goals of the Washoe County Home Consortium that the city of Reno is the lead entity for, and, um, as match for the Home Investment Partnership Program that's required. We, so the programs that are covered in this CAPR include the Community Development Block Grant Program. You can see that we used about $1.7 million of those program, of those funds for, um, for community development and low- and moderate-income benefit projects. The Emergency Shelter Grant is required to be focused on projects that support homeless, homeless services. The Home Investment Partnership Program provides funding for affordable housing development and programs for, um, low- and moderate-income households, and the trust funds mirror that. In the past fiscal year, we have accomplished a number of things. We spent about $2 million to fund three affordable housing complexes. Two are new construction, and one was rehab. They totaled 107 units of affordable housing serving households at or below 5% of AMI. That's about $28,000 for a two-person household, which is appropriate for these projects, because one is transitional for individuals recovering from homelessness, and the other two are for senior housing. In addition, we fund, use trust funds to fund a community assistance, deposit assistance program, to assist individuals who are currently experiencing homelessness, to pay their deposit for a rental unit and/or utilities to become rehoused. And we assisted 56 such individuals in fiscal year 2011-12. In addition, we use CDBG funds to fund accessibility modifications to assist disabled persons to remain in their, in their homes. And that can be a rental or a homeownership situation. Um, for, CDBG is the primary source of these infrastructure projects that we completed. We used about $360,000 in CDBG for a number of park and playground projects, primarily. Echo Loder Field was, um, completed this past fiscal year. Dick Taylor Park, the accessible playground, was installed this past year, um, through a community process of selecting neighborhood revitalization programs. Community groups brought to us the next three projects, Miguel Valverde Park fencing, Robert Robinhood Park fencing, as well as Northwest Sidewalk Construction. Roger Corbett Playground was approved last, late last year, um, to reallocate some funds, some CDBG funds that, to assist in meeting timeliness. The Northwest Sidewalk and Roger Corbett are currently underway and are anticipated to be complete within the next year. We also used CDBG funds, about $100,000, to fund a code enforcement officer to, or the equivalent of one FTE and code enforcement officers, to, um, assist in arresting blight in the RDA 2. And we also paid, made a double payment for the, the bond for Ten North Virginia and the Community Assistance Center, so that it'll be paid off, um, a year early. And the final slide is for the public services. We continued to fund the Human Services Consortium for the last year, uh, council's approval, and we funded, did almost $100,000 for that. We funded six agencies and helped provide services to 935 individuals in the community in need. And the Community Assistance Center, we increased the amount of public service dollars that were going to the Community Assistance Center operations to meet the, the budget that was, that had a shortfall this, this past year. We, we sheltered 2,340 individuals, and that, that project took $336,000 in CDBG and $89,000 in ESG, on top of the county's contribution, um, and the city of Sparks's contribution, and some external funding that the, that staff secured. The final activity we undertook was we funded, um, about $40,000 of the Economic and Development Administrator position to provide technical assistance to outstanding loans, as well as attempt to recruit additional small business into the city of Reno. And that is an overview of what we did with the HUD funding and the trust funds in the past year. I'd answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, anybody?
Yeah, Jody, when were the improvements?
Yeah, Jody, when were the improvements put into Echo Loader? And this is gonna be a discussion later today that I have on the agenda?
Okay, so the, it was the soccer field that was re, that was improved, and those improvements had actually started prior to the begin, to July 1 of 2011, and were finished, I believe, prior to the school year beginning in 2011.
So the, the improvements have been in for about a year now?
Yes.
Is there funding to maintain those improvements?
Um, the school district maintains those, I believe, because it's, it, that's again through that joint use agreement between Parks and Rec and the school district.
Okay, and I'll ask that question later on. So was the field, a new field was put in, what was put in over there?
We did the turf, we redid the, the watering system, bleachers, and I believe a shade structure.
And then on the payment, 'cause council-directed staff, so we made an early payment on that to try and get the bond paid off. How much is owing on the center now?
I believe we have two more payments on the Ten North Virginia Community Assistance Center bond.
And then it'll be paid off?
Yes.
So, and then on the, did we get credit for interest for paying that early?
We did. It'll buy, it does reduce the interest we'll pay overall.
And so that funding, those two last payments are anticipated to be made through CDGB as well, right?
Yes.
And then for the code enforcement officers, is that going to continue?
It is currently in the budget for the current fiscal year, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Chair'll entertain a motion for approval of the report.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll go to item F three, International Property Maintenance Code, F three one, staff report.
F two.
That was F two one. We're now at F three.
We still need to do the other.
No, I jumped out of myself. Okay, we're at F two one. Excuse me. Yes, it throws me off.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Thanks for bailing me out. Staff report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Steve Hardesty with Public Works. Before you was the lease agreement for the Women and Children's Center for their, of the Sierra, which would be located out at the Neal Road Complex.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Chair'll entertain a motion for approval.
Yes.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to item F three, International Property Maintenance Code. Item F three one, staff report, or do you have a motion?
Well, if there's no questions.
No questions.
But for the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That's on, now are there any questions, anybody? Chair'll entertain a motion for approval of the staff report?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. F three two, ordinance introduction.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill number 6816, Ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Building Construction, Chapter 14.05, Property Maintenance Code, Section 14.05010, Adoption of the 2003 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, to adopt the 2012 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code with appendices and amendments, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Moved to refer.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Joe, I really apologize not letting you make a presentation. You put on a tie and a coat and a suit and everything, and I should've let you have a little TV time, shouldn't I?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, item F four, Uniform Code of Abatement Dangerous Buildings. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
All right. Any questions on item F four one, staff report? Chair'll entertain a motion?
I'm, I'll make the motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Go to item F four two, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Mr. Mayor.
I love doing it a second time, 'cause it really throws her off. It's an ordinance introduction.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill number 6817, An Ordinance to Repeal Title 14, Chapter 14.24 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and amending all references to the Uniform Code of Abatement of Dangerous Buildings to the International Property Maintenance Code, together with all other matters relating thereto.
Moved to refer.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Riverside Drive, this one is, we need to open it up. Madam Secretary, all the notices have been, we, oh, that's right, we did that earlier.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. I apologize, I am not used to this new agenda on item F seven. It had a time o'clock, time certain at two o'clock, so we should really open that at two to continue it. So if we could have a redo on that, I would appreciate it.
Do you care if we do it?
Can I just make a motion that it's two o'clock?
Second.
F seven does have a two o'clock.
A move to reconsider F seven, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. All right.
Did we get the staff report? I didn't see, that's why I didn't see it.
F six, we've done that. F seven's at two.
G one.
All right, now we go to item G, for ordinance adoption, item G one one.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. This is the staff report, and so it just needs to be accepted, and then we'll read the ordinance when you call that number.
Moved to accept the report.
As I understand it, we, do we need to say, as part of the motion, that it's subject to the annexation?
Yes.
And when we accept the staff report? Or when we approve the ordinance?
Aye.
I would move to accept the staff recommendation in the staff report on this item, and then adopt the ordinance on the next.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G one two.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ordinance number 6250, Case Number LDC 12-00048, Village Parkway Zoning Map Amendment, Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning, Rezoning a Plus or Minus 13.9 Acre Site Located on the Northeast Corner of Village Parkway slash Diamond Peak Drive Intersection and South of Cold Springs Drive from LLR 1, Large Lot Residential 1 Acre, to NC, Neighborhood Commercial, together with all other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to, move to adopt.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. H resolutions. H one, Community Grant, Pride Grant, Staff Report. Any questions? Chair'll entertain a motion. H one one.
I'll move to accept the staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H one two, Resolution.
Resolution number 7762, Resolution granting Community Pride Grant Funds to the Great Basin Youth Soccer League for the Moana Spring Soccer Project in the amount of $19,238.
Move, second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H two, Southside School, Staff Report. Item H two one.
If there's no questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, you approve the staff recommendation, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H two two, Resolution.
Resolution number 7763, Resolution of the Reno City Council declaring it that it is in the best interest of the city to lease a portion of the historic Southside School building located at 190 East Liberty Street, Reno, Nevada, without offering the property to the public pursuant to NRS 268.064 and other matters properly relating thereto.
Moved to adopt.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. H three, Major Fund Designations. H three one, in the discussion, Staff Report. Chair'll entertain a motion for?
Quick question.
About the staff report?
Yeah, I thought we were doing Building Enterprise as a designated fund.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. The Building Enterprise Fund is a separate fund. It is just not considered a major fund, and so it will show as a separate fund on the financial statements, just in a separate section. This is in accordance with the General Accounting Standards Board. They want to define, have the council define what is considered a major fund.
Okay, and then also the Event Center Dev Fund is, is separate as well, correct?
Correct. What is separate is the general fund, of course, the Retract Fund, the Downtown Event Center Fund, the RDA and the Sewer Fund. Those are considered major just based on their dollar volume as a percentage. The Building Enterprise Fund and the Street Fund are not considered major funds, but they are reported separately in the financial statements.
Great, thank you.
Approval of the, the staff report, motion, please?
I'll approve the staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Have a second, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. H three two, Resolution.
Resolution number 7764, Resolution approving major fund designations for fiscal year 2012.
Moved to adopt.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H four, Budget Augmentation, Staff Report. Anybody got any question?
I do. Mr. Mayor, quickly, Kate, just wanted to bring you up here, Kate. The, what is the fee right now for a, a standing billboard? 'Cause it's for digital, correct?
Yes.
Of 4,500? What's the fee for the?
I'm gonna let Rob Miller take this one.
Okay. For regular billboard?
Oh, that's a question for Building Enterprise.
Okay, how, how did staff come up with this fee?
This was the fee that was request, Rob Miller, Office of Management and Budget, for the record. This was the fee that was requested by the Planning Department when they were going to institute the ordinance for the LED billboards. So this is what they developed. This was, matches the special use permit fee of $4,500, I believe. It's the next one right above it. So I think they used the same number for this one.
Okay, it's just, there's really nothing in the staff report that determines how we came up with this fee. I'd like to know at the, the regular standing billboard, what, what are the fees for that?
Thank you for your tenure, Community Development Director. I'll have to go and research that, what our existing fees are. The $4,500 was determined through a process of staff looking at the time it takes to go ahead and process a billboard application.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have, currently have a special exception for billboards. I think this was new in the ordinance.
Yeah, and it's not a problem. I'm not disputing staff. I'm just wondering where they came up with the 4,500, but if you're telling me it's on the time that it takes to review the application, I'm okay with that.
And again, some, sometimes it takes a little longer on the billboard, sometimes it takes a little shorter. This, my understanding was an average.
Okay. All right.
Can you give me a motion?
Yep, move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H four two.
Did we read that, we didn't read that resolution?
Huh?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, never mind.
Resolution number 7765, Resolution to augment the budget of the City of Reno, Nevada for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance introduction, item G, standard department items, J one, Community Development, Staff Report. Any question? Chair'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Mr. Woodley. This was an issue in my ward. Just want to make sure, Alex, this was cited, this business was cited for actually doing this illegally before. Is, can you give me a little bit of the history? Am I remembering this correctly?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Alex Woodley, for the record, business license. Yes, ma'am, what happened here was he didn't, we did give him a notice to comply from the business license perspective. Mr. Ortega stated that he was under the impression that he was able to conduct the secondhand dealer as far as buying, purchasing gold. So what he was doing was, he was complying with the requirements of reporting to the police department unbeknownst to him that he needed a secondhand dealer license. It was during that course of one of the transactions where some stolen items were identified, and he did turn it over to the police department, and he did cooperate with the, with the police department. Throughout that process, they contacted us, and we informed them that, no, he didn't have the required secondhand dealer license. So at that time, we gave him a cease and desist order. He, he, well, he stopped conducting the business. During that time, City Council had the moratorium on the, the ability to purchase gold. So it's been approximately six months, and he was waiting for, for the moratorium to be pulled, and just at the last council, we did codify a certain specific restrictions and conditions and approvals that council can't place on secondhand dealers, specific to secondhand dealing with purchasing gold. So in that process, one of the requirements is that they are not involved in anything under title NRS 604, which is check cashing, high-interest loans, or any type of financial business, which they would be licensed through the state, which he has stated that he isn't, and we've researched that, and we know that he's not. He understands the condition. Also, any other type of secondhand dealer, as far as loans or any other type of second, whether it's clothing or what have you. And we have Mr. Ortega here, if, if necessary, to state on the record, but he has confirmed that he has no intent of any other type of secondhand dealership.
So staff's recommending approval with this license, Alex?
That is correct. And this is the first time you've seen this, and this is what we will be bringing forward from now on. We will be pulling it off of the consent agenda to give you the ability to, in case you wanted to place any other conditions on it.
Great. And then just one question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, for Lino?
Go ahead. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hi. My name is Lino Ortega, owner of El Mundo Latina.
And, and Lino, I just want to make sure you understand all the conditions of, of your application as far as the check cashing, and you can't do that, and the difference with the, the new regulations in the application.
Yeah.
So you understand it all?
I understand.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And, and he did, I think, as Alex stated, he was meeting the conditions. He didn't realize that he needed a, a separate license for this, Mr. Mayor, and he actually had turned over the, the stolen goods request to the Reno Police Department. So I think he was trying to do the right thing here, and so I'll go ahead and move to approve this, this privileged license.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Finance Administration, item J two. Any questions on item J two? Chair'll entertain a, Mr. Asik.
I do have one question, and it's on the, the contract in front of us. Who does Ms. Craig report to?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. She reports to the City Attorney's Office. I believe Tracy Chase is her direct supervisor.
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. I directly supervise her. All the, all the attorneys in our office are under the direction of the City Attorney as elected official.
Moved to refer.
And I'd like to check into Tracy. Since the council approved the contract, didn't we actually hire her to work for the council directly instead of for the city attorney?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. Council would have authority to do that, but in this instance, what a critical labor shortage designation allows is the continuance in employment in the current position. So that didn't actually occur. It's not specifically a contract. It's allowing an employee to continue employment.
And how long have we had this critical labor shortage with this person?
I think it's set out in the staff report, but it has been a, a number it has been a number of years that council, I think, has allowed it to be revised. The law allows you every two years to revisit the issue. The current one that council approved goes till June of this next year.
But it's been seven years.
Yeah, it's been a while. I know you've approved two, three.
And I know I don't want to put you on the spot because we have a city attorney, and my question is, when's this going to, you know, the law requires that someone be trained to take the position, and there's no one there after seven years yet to, to take over this position, Mr. Mayor.
And, Mr. Mayor, I can add to that as well. We do have one, Mr. Boney is in training to take over the position, but in addition, just so council is aware, and I know you're aware of this already, but we had significant budget cuts, and we've had a loss of a third of our staff from 2008 to current. So we appreciate your consideration of those matters.
So there's no, I don't want to get into it now. I mean, there's attorneys looking for jobs, so that shouldn't matter.
I do have a question for finance and the subject matter. What, Robert, can you, by approving J2, can you tell me what we're doing here? I guess I need some clarification on the Health Savings Plan.
The Health Savings Account, or in her case, since she's of that age, it's a health retirement account. It's the same thing. It is set up, it is allowed federally to be set up. It's a tax-deferred account that then can be used to pay medically associated bills. Unfortunately, the way it was set up for her, it was not appropriate because it cannot be set up for a single individual. It has to be set up for an entire bargaining unit. That's why we're having to make the change here. So what we did was, the option was to redirect the funds that was the amount similar to what is going to, would have gone to PERS, Public Employees Retirement System, to a deferred comp account, or to cease making those payments altogether.
Is, so if we approve the option, it'll cost the city an extra $27,000 a year? I mean, what are we legally responsible to do?
Well, that, either option is available to the council. Currently, we are spending about $27,000 a year, or is being paid to the Deputy City Attorney's Account. So it is continuing what is already going on, what is occurring. It's just that we cannot continue to do that. In our review, we noted that that is illegal.
Again, is there any net difference to the City of Reno as far as what we're doing now and if we were to change this?
No. It is, it is exactly what it would have been last year and will be.
Okay.
So it is in the budget. It has been budgeted for.
Just a different vehicle, right?
It's just a different account. Instead of a health, retirement, Health Savings Account, which is, most people are familiar with. Maybe a Health Savings Account, it would go to a deferred comp account.
Okay, the chair, entertain a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to stay consistent. This is the same thing I've talked about with the city attorney. The only difference here is it's actually a contract, and without Ms. Craig here to negotiate a contract with, I don't know if we can unilaterally make this decision, quite honestly, because she has to agree to it, and she's not even here. So we can't, I mean, we can do this and offer it to her, she can say no, but I think we could also offer, again, she's getting something that other attorneys are not getting. She's getting money. But it's a contract, so that's a little difference than an elected official. But I'm going to stay consistent and not approve, not support.
Where's Marilyn, by the way?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. She had a scheduled vacation. She didn't know this was going to be on the item. And also, this is within council's authority, because she is an employee. It's not a contract, because, and also, as you're aware, the, she does not receive any healthcare from the City of Reno, because she went on the state plan when she retired. So that does save the city $12,000 a year from other like employees.
But if that's the, the reason for giving her money somewhere else, basically, we're still paying. I mean, that's what the issue is here.
Yeah, and this would be equal to the PERS payment, so, so I'm sure you're aware of that, but just so you have the facts. But this is within council's discretion. And if council determines it does not want to approve it, like any employee, they have choices they can make, depending on what your authority is.
This is Robert Chisel. Can I get clarification that you're seeking option one to make the payment? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a question. So if this is approved, she continues employment until June 2013?
Again, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Council already took that action previously. So she is not under contract to continue till that period of time, but she can remain an employee till that period of time. And at that point in time, you know, the City Attorney's Office and the City Council will revisit that, if not before.
Do you know what the plan is to transition? Because I also recall, I understand the critical shortage, I understand the value of Ms. Craig, which I have repeatedly said, I think she has done some fine things for the city, and because of her institutional knowledge, et cetera, it's tough to replace. But, but what is the ultimate plan on filling her position with somebody that, so it's not a critical need shortage from the department? What is the timeframe on that? Do you know?
I can give you some of the plan, but the rest of it will have to come from the city attorney. Currently, we have Mr. Boney, who's been training in the position. In addition, so council is aware, we had another attorney resign yesterday, so we now are looking at filling for that position. So we are looking to try to get our ranks up to speed, so we have a full complement of the staff that we have budgeted.
You said an attorney left yesterday?
Yeah, I don't want to put that out on this item. Not left, but provided their resignation in, in two weeks. So we'll inform council of that.
Okay. Well, you stated it like we knew, and so we don't know. Okay. I have a motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that, no?
No.
Show the vote, six, six one. Parks and Recreation, at this time, we go to item J3. We have several people here wish to speak. We have... We have several people wish to speak on this item. Some will call them up. Petrie, Brave Petrie?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm Brave Petrie. And I wasn't exactly sure of the agenda, but, of what was to be talked about, but we're against certain proposal of, I'm against certain proposals of the church in regards to the park on how it limits through giving their donation, what their agreements, what they get out of it, limits public use, and, and how that affects the greater community. So.
Okay, but it's not privatization?
Right.
Okay. You'd said privatization.
Yeah, and I was just, I was mistaken.
Okay.
The agenda.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Christopher Hill? Christopher Hill?
Just stepped down.
All right, I'll come back to it. Let him relax, he'll be all right. Billy Andrews?
Hello, my name is Billy Andrews, and I own and live in the home at 1108 Plumas Street, which faces the east end of Walker Street. The view from my living room and my home office is the Plumas Park. I also own five rentals at 1110 Plumas Street, which is directly across the street from the northeast corner of Plumas Park. I am here to speak because I have some concerns, excuse me, about the Plumas Park Capital Improvement Donation Agreement proposed by Our Lady of Snows. There exists a document called the Plumas Neighborhood Plan. The plan was adopted by the City, Reno City Council on January 10th, 1995, and amended by the Reno City Council on September 25th, 2001. The first page of this document is a summary stating, quote, "The Plumas Neighborhood Planning Process began in April 1992. A survey was mailed to over 4,000 residents, asking them to identify the issues to be addressed as part of the neighborhood plan. More than 500 residents and concerned citizens requested that they be notified of all Plumas Neighborhood Meetings. It was these residents who participated in general meeting, in general neighborhood meetings, committee meetings, or communicated with the city by phone to voice their concerns in the area," unquote. The Plumas Neighborhood Plan outlines five major topics, two of which are, quote, "One, Development of a Neighborhood Park. Residents want to redesign part of the Billingshurst Park as a Neighborhood Park. Two, Neighborhood Quality of Life. Residents want to limit the intrusion of multifamily, office, and commercial uses into single-family residential areas." On page five of this document is a section on the development of a Neighborhood Park. It states, issue, and a quote, "Residents want to redesign the Billingshurst Park so that a portion of the park will function as a Neighborhood Park. Solution: The Quality of Life Subcommittee worked with an engineer of a landscape construction company from the neighborhood on a redesign of the park. When funds are available for the park work to be done, the upper soccer field would be converted into a multi-use space with a small grass area, picnic tables, shade structures, trees, a pathway, and a new play area. The lower soccer field will be left unaltered for the youth soccer league," unquote. Page 14 of the document contains a map of the proposed improvements for the West Billingshurst Park. The staff report for this agenda item, J3, J.3, states that, "In addition, the OSL representative met with the NAB and interested community members on September 11th, 2012, to seek their feedback on the proposed improvements," unquote. At this meeting, the NAB was presented with a plan for the park that no park neighbor had seen before that evening. Although there was an opportunity for interested neighborhood members to comment, there was limited opportunity for them to give design input." Okay, my question is, why are we discounting this document and not taking into consider the wishes of 500 people that worked so hard over 10 years ago to come up with a plan? Thank you.
Thank you. George Swainston?
George Swainston, I'm a resident at 1410 Humboldt Street. I also am in opposition of not the entire improvement of the park, but Our Lady of Snows and the Capital Improvement Donation Agreement doesn't currently meet the standards that they proposed. And I do actually have one drawing in particular, if that comes up. The proposal to actually have a fence put into place, some of the local residents around the area actually looked at the actual National Place Safety Standards, which were, you know, brought up by Children of Snow saying, this is what national and federal standards are. We don't necessarily have, you know, the neighborhood does not have a disagreement with that. We love the idea that Snows is willing to come in and improve the park. It's on what conditions that they're, you know, proposing. And it is my opinion that it's not legitimate to go, okay, I'm going to take this part of the agreement, but not use this. As you can see on the red line on the back, that's 72 inches, according to the National Public Safety Foundation, they actually have to have a spacer. So currently, what the proposal is, I can actually lay this down differently, is to actually have it butt against the historical wall. That is actually against what the National Place Safety Foundation says is legitimate and appropriate. So they actually would have to have a 72-inch gap between the barriers of the steps, the barrier there, and 72 inches away from the wall itself, which then now is cutting down several more trees and makes it just a general intrusion, not designed to be creating safety by design, which is one of the main obstacles of it. Due also to the fact that in the technical drawings, it does have, you know, the fence butting up right against the brick wall. There is some concern with the neighborhood and people, children. I do not have children, but I do have a concern of children climbing to the top of the fence and jumping off a four-foot or six-foot, because that then does become an eight-to-10-foot drop, and the case of injury, which then the city would become liable. There's also the issue of it, bringing it up to the code of the National Safety Playground, the ASMTA, the CPSC, MPSI, lots of acronyms, that the city would actually have to, if any liability did come forth, that it would be the city's responsibility to modify the plans at that point in time, and I would hate to see that kind of strain on the city budget already, when there is a little bit more ability to have a thoughtful and, you know, can thought-out plan. So we do, I do hope that you do postpone this donation agreement so that it can be fleshed out and vetted in a little bit more of an open fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Dodson? Betty Dodson?
Mayor Kuschele, members of the City Council, thank you. My name is Betty Dodson, and I live at 1034 Humboldt Street in Reno. I am respectfully requesting that you postpone the donation agreement decision today. As a neighbor, I do fully appreciate and understand the need for making improvements to the park. But, and you also may recall that I have also been very, very concerned about safety of children. So as we look at the donation agreement, the current standards, the current drawings do not comply with the American Society for Testing Materials, ASTM, the Consumer Product Safety Commission, and the National Playground Safety Institute. Standards, as stated in Article 4.3 of the Plumas Park Capital Improvement Donation Agreement, the city will have to modify plans under Article 5.4 and bear all expenses related to the project to bring it in compliance with national standards. So here is a picture, let's see if this works. How does this work?
She'll pull it up. Go ahead and put your picture down.
Yeah, do I, oh, it's there. Good. Oh, I thought I could read from here. Anyway, Monroe Street already has, Monroe and Lander, this is a picture of what we currently have, okay? And we have a, a big fenced area in the corner that was at one time a playground, okay? Now, the fences should be located so as to prohibit the use of permanent structures, okay? So we have a problem here with this outside fence and the rock wall right now as it exists. There also should be at least a clear area of 72 inches from that permanent structure to an, a fence, and we don't have that right now. Let me show you. Here's another picture. This particular picture here shows how the current fence is not compliant with that 72-inch standard. And if we go on, to be compliant with the 72-inch standard, the red line in this picture here shows where the fence needs to be located, which is right almost in the street because of the rock wall. And I need to remind you that those are historic rock walls that relate back to the WPA projects. So non-compliant fencing is a serious, serious liability problem and concern. A child, a climbing child could fall between the fence and a rock and the rock wall and become injured and even possibly trapped. There's a risk of serious injury and also death. So making existing fencing, ASTM compliant, requires removing the sidewalks over here on Monroe and Lander, and as a result, I feel very strongly we need to postpone this project. You do, I ask, request that you have a certified playground and safety inspector accredited by NPSI to inspect the park.
Okay, you're going to have to wrap it up.
I will. Snows should submit a compliant technical design for all improvements, and that Snows submits a detailed project... that Snow submits a detailed project proposal. The city really needs to examine its liability concerns associated with taking our public park and setting aside a piece of it, particularly that upper terrace and making it into a playground.
Okay, thank you very much.
There are other locations that'll work, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Dodson? James Dodson? Okay.
My name's James Dodson. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak, Mr. Mayor and the city council.
Glad you're here.
I'm requesting that you postpone Snow's Plumas Park Capital Improvement Donation Agreement because current technical drawings do not comply with ASTM, CPSC, NPSI standards and guidelines as stated in Article four-point-three of the Plumas Park Capital Improvement Donation Agreement. The city will have to modify plans under Article five-point-four, bearing expenses to bring this project into compliance. Improvements in site are not compliant with ASTMF twenty-fourty-nine four-point-one. A play zone shall be protected in accordance with this specification in locations that are vulnerable to vehicular traffic and for the control of entering or exiting the play zone area. Plumas Park is an ASTMF twenty-fourty-nine vulnerable play zone because of streets and parking lots. The distance that any of these hazards are from the play equipment or its usage zones will determine whether or not a fence is required and which areas are to be addressed before others. Therefore, the levels of hazard concern can be defined by clarifying the distance. Level one is where the hazard is less than thirty feet from the play equipment or its use zone. Level two hazards are thirty feet up to one hundred feet. Level three hazards are one hundred feet up to two hundred feet. I have a schematic here that will illustrate that briefly. See if that comes up. Is that, how, face down or face up?
No, not sure.
Okay, here we go. Okay, use zone safety hazards are highlighted in red. You can see Lander, Monroe, and Walker, everything there. Streets are within thirty feet of the use zone. Okay, so, the little story to illustrate why this is pretty important. All right, imagine a stressed-out mom.
There you go.
Imagine a stressed-out mom is on the phone parking at Walker Street, the use zone access point. This was Snow's proposed drop-off zone in other plans. She hops out of her car to help her child get to school, but she forgets to put the car in park, and it accelerates. Into a group of Snow's students playing in the use zone. Mary got ran over. She's dead. Both Teresa's legs are crushed. Chris was really lucky, and he only broke his arm. Accidents like this have cost other cities upwards of fifty million dollars. This is an unacceptable risk. All liability and risk issues must be addressed before any approval or action can be taken regarding Snow's Plumas Park Capital Improvement Donation Agreement. Thank you all kindly for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Bremen?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Kishel, city council members.
Please speak into the mic.
City manager, city manager, clinger. I'm Liz Bremen. I live at twenty-one thirty Lander Street. I own twelve oh three Lander, the other historic rock house which faces the new building. Snow's has perch, or just built, and I also own a property on Caliente, so I'm well invested in the neighborhood. I'm going to spare you going through the details. What I do want to say, though, is I too believe that the park improvements are wonderful. I think it's wonderful that OLS is doing what they're doing to bring money forth. However, to quote Councilwoman Zadra, "The zealous approach that is being used at this time, we feel this should be postponed until this is better thought out." There are many reasons. You'll hear some others. But my job is to tell you, and I'm not going to quote all of the standards, because you've heard it twice so far, that Lander's, the Lander Street exterior rock retaining wall is not a compliant continuous barrier. And I'll explain what that is. Okay, hang on here. Let's see if I can get this right. Up, down, is there? Okay, there we go. It's not, it's not compliant, and let me just read my little blurb here, for strength and deflection limits. This is extremely important. This is the safety of our children. This isn't just the safety of the OLS kids. This is creating a playground that we can use for the community at large, for a larger and better-served community, for a neighborhood, not just a segregated community, secular community. The strength and deflection limits, you have to be able to withstand a one-time, ten-thousand-pound load. The wall is located at two feet above ground, as you can see with a, and this is a historic rock wall. We don't want to fiddle with this. Is this safe for the children? No. It says, and I'm not going to go into the, to the detail, because I will give you a copy of this. The Lander Street entry site is not ASTM compliant. A vehicle has already driven in at the top entry point before. Luckily, no children were injured. We are looking for a solution that will be better long-term for the school and for the community. We absolutely believe that this is being rushed to the point that we're not giving careful consideration to the costs, and we are looking at millions of dollars should someone be injured, which are going to rest on the shoulders of the city council and the taxpayers. And we don't want that to happen. We think we can do something that we can work with the church and find a better way and a better placement for the playground. We would just appreciate your consideration. I'm going to stand on my three minutes. Yay. Anyway, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Starting to sound like we need to tear those walls out. They're not compliant.
Pardon me?
Nothing, nothing. I'm just mouthing off. Cheryl, I can't, she's, would like to give Ted my three minutes. Cheryl Kay? Katzman or, huh? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. As open meeting law protocol, you can't really give your three minutes to another individual. Of course, if somebody comes up and council wants to ask them a question after their three minutes is up, you know, that's up to the city council.
Well, he's giving three minutes in just a second. Ted, left here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Ted Levatter. I live at four-
Levatter, I'm sorry. Apologize.
No, no problem. I live at four-twenty Reno Avenue. I am requesting postponement of Agenda Item J three for the following reasons. Number one, the current plan does not meet standard safety performance specifications for public use outdoor play areas. Number two, it does not take into consideration the historic master plan required by NRS two-seven-eight-point-one-six-zero. And three, the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, adopted by Resolution number five-zero-eight-six and amended September twenty-fifth two thousand and one, offers Plumas Park Plan that is safer, more accessible for people with disabilities, and in line with the historic and Plumas Neighborhood Plan. I would like to draw your attention to the donation agreement, four-point-three. All improvements shall meet applicable legal requirements and industry standards. And Item number five-point-four, the city reserves the right to modify the plan at any time for other good causes, but the city will be responsible for the cost of those changes. Quoting from ASTM two-zero-four-nine three-point-two-point-one-two defines a vulnerable play area as a play zone in proximity of roads or other debilitating or life-threatening features. Four-point-one states, "A play zone shall be protected in accordance with this specification in locations that are vulnerable to vehicular traffic. Playground enclosures shall be on all sides of the play area." And six-point-one-three, "All vulnerable play areas shall have fences or barriers that meet a minimum of four feet high." The OLS Park Plan does not meet any of those requirements. This puts our children's safety at risk and leaves the taxpayers liable for their park improvement plan. Number two, this, their plan does not protect the historic resource known as the historic rock wall. Page one-five of the master plan states, "Comments on development proposals are most appropriate when couched in terms of their relationship to the master plan." Adopted in two thousand and eight, the historic plan on page three states, "Historic characteristics should be respected and maintained when possible, and new developments should demonstrate an effort to retain the historic character of the city." They are planning on using an historic resource as a playground barrier. This would create an attractive nuisance for children. They could be playing, jumping, climbing, or other ways destroying. So not only does it not protect the historic resource, it is also a violation of ASTM standards. They're also planning on building an ADA ramp over the rock wall. This would effectively change its character and be a violation of the historic master plan. But there is a better way. There is a park plan that would meet federal safety guidelines, provide ADA access, and protect the historic rock wall. This plan was codified in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan. The Plumas Neighborhood Plan, or, I'm sorry, from the master plan, ten-point-one-six-point-oh-seven, neighborhood plans cover specific areas of the city where the city council and planning commission have determined a more detailed plan is appropriate. From page one of the Plumas Plan, "When the plan is enacted, design standards identified in the plan will be codified into Reno Municipal Code." From page fifteen of the plan, "The redesign of the Plumas Park is meant to enhance the feeling that this park is for use by local residents, not just organized groups." I had a PowerPoint that-
You have to wrap it up now. You're through. You've done your three minutes. Thank you very much. Elizabeth Wall?
Good afternoon, council. I speak today in opposition to the international incremental taking of a public park by a private entity. In nineteen ninety-eight, the then Reno Catholic Bishop brought an action very similar to the present action, seeking abandonment of a city street with a view to doubling the size of its private school, and also to, quote, "enhance the surrounding neighborhood," end quote. Failing that, the school could, quote, "possibly close down and relocate," end quote. The neighbors of the Old Southwest, one of Reno's oldest neighborhoods, from California to Plum and Manor to Virginia, are overwhelmingly opposed to being thus enhanced by having our public park invaded by a private entity. Snow's could have moved out near Monogue, but alas, another parish is now building an elementary school out there. Snow's is back, seeking to encroach on the one and only public park in the Old Southwest, Plumas Park. As it happens, we residents of the Old Southwest love our park. It's our open space gathering place, the hub of our community. Legal counsel for Snow's submitted at a recent NAB meeting its proposal for incremental encroachment on all but the lower field of Plumas Park. The neighborhood has had quite enough of Snow's school traffic, bringing children from far and wide into the neighborhood, all too often with moms on cell phones, too many driving too fast for the safety of the neighborhood. We really don't want several hundred more students inappropriately stuffed into our neighborhood, and we certainly don't want any private group assuming dominion or control of even one inch of our public park. I've been told by a reliable source that the goal is to, quote, "Push this through while we have a Catholic minority, majority on the city council," end quote. Now, who was it who observed that a man cannot serve two masters? I do know that a good number of ours have said they do not approve of Snow's efforts to expand into the neighborhood park. These are Catholic neighbors, but that they don't want their names known. I'm troubled by that, their inability to feel comfortable speaking up in the American West of two thousand and twelve. After all, this isn't Germany in the thirties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for letting us speak today. I'm part of the group that's called the Neighbors, I guess now. I've been now to two NAB meetings, three Parks and Rec Commission meetings, and the workshop held at the OLS. Been watching this, and you've heard from my neighbors that, you know, it's not quite to code and all of this. And what I kind of want to comment on, and don't think we haven't asked ourselves, is like, who are these crazy people saying no to a hundred and ten thousand dollars and a park and a park, a playground and ADA ramp? And we're not saying no to that, and we're happy to work with the church. What we're saying no is that there is a better way. You know, and I, as I've gotten to know these neighbors, I mean, we're not just a cranky old bunch of naysayers. I do assure you that. They're people who have deep involvement in civic participation. I get nervous. Anyway, they're people, they've run for city office. They serve on committees for historic preservation, for promoting access for people who happen to be disabled. We're a varied group, as you can see. Last night, we found out we're not all voting the same for the president. These are people who work on, on campaigns for both people bound for Washington and the next people who are going to be sitting in your seats. So I really hope that you take the time to really listen to what they say. And our goal is not, you know, our park needs help. I mean, there's been a crappy old couch in the corner for over a month. I've called the city three times. No one will take it away. And it needs help, and we want to work with the school and make that happen. We're really thoroughly committed to civic participation. You know, my husband was recently made a citizen, and it was a really rousing speech at the ceremony about civic participation. And that's what we're here for. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, Madam Secretary, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I feel like I'm up against a stacked deck because I am in favor of the proposal before you today. And in the interest of time, I'm going to just read an open letter that I wrote. My name is Ed Wetta, and I want to speak here today on behalf of myself and other families who could not be here today to voice their support of this proposal to improve the basketball courts at Plumas Park. It's my understanding that this improvement is being funded by grants that were secured within the community through the efforts facilitated by Our Lady of Snow's school and will not require any type of matching funds by the city of Reno. The basketball courts have been in a state of disrepair for years, and the court on the south end of the park is a safety hazard with the asphalt substandard condition. In my opinion, this is a liability issue for the city. There's also an issue of the fenced area adjacent to the court on the south side of the street that's fenced off adjacent to Walker Street that has become a magnet for alcohol consumption, which is evidenced by empty beer cans and bottles that are cleaned up on a daily basis by the teachers from the school prior to the start of the school each day. Approximately two months ago, someone decided to dump an old couch in the fenced-off area to make their beer drinking more comfortable. I brought pictures of this area that I've submitted to the council for their review, and also asked the council to take the time to visit the courts if they haven't already done so, so they can observe the state of disrepair that I'm describing here today. It is this gradual erosion of the park and the lack of general upkeep that will lead to increased illegal activity, thus becoming a magnet for individuals that would be in direct opposition of the city's intent for the enjoyment of neighbors and families throughout the Reno area who come to the park to enjoy the safe and peaceful surroundings. I applaud the efforts of the school to be a good neighbor to the community and take on this project, not only for the kids from their school who use these courts at recess, but the entire neighborhood and community to enjoy. In our time of economic struggle and numerous articles about services that are being cut by our community, I find it refreshing, refreshing that this generous offer that is presented here today before you in an effort for stewardship, stewardship of the park by members of the community who are willing to fund this much-needed improvement. And since I have a minute left, I would just like to make a few points for you to ponder that I heard from other members of the community. It seemed that resounding issues that were brought to you here today by the members that, that live close by were that of state statute, state and federal law as far as building- that live close by were that of state statute, um, state and federal law as far as building codes and what it does require or doesn't require. I would submit to this council that the kids have been jumping off that wall for years, and people with their dogs jump off it. And I think that, um, the building department and your city inspectors and architectural design review and the folks that submit the plans to you along with your city inspectors will make sure that they're in compliance with all the regulatory laws that would apply to this particular project. So I would implore you to propose this improvement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Michael Bloomberg?
Hello. Uh, my name is Michael Bloomberg. I'm a really recent and official Nevada resident. I originally came here from Minnesota, and I just moved to 1318 Arlington Avenue and recently became a member and active in the Plumas Park Recreation. So, so I don't know a whole lot about everything that's going on, but the one thing I do know is that, uh, is that I don't think we're asking for, you know, you guys, for Our Lady of Snows to cease and not do this. I think the only thing we really want is just to do it the right way. You know, like my mom always told me, you know, do it right the first time, you don't have to do it again. And so what I have here, if you could allow me to use the projector here, is just a proposal on the Plumas Park. And what I have, if you can see, this is number one here, and this is Walker Lane. And what I'm trying to suggest between three and one is that Area Three does not have ADA access 100% of the time due to the road closure. We call them blizzard fences back home because they keep the snow away from your driveway. And I've noticed when I walk my dogs around the neighborhood that those fences are up throughout most of the day, and I get it, it's to protect the kids. But number one would actually, uh, it does not have ADA access to the road. This would have better ADA access because it would be 100% open during the park hours, whatever they may be. So that would be better there. And this here, number two, is a park that we think and we know that it would meet federal safety guidelines. So this is a all-in-all, you know, we take a look at that. But we don't want to refuse Our Lady of Snows, and like I said, I don't know the exactly what's going on, but I don't think, and I'm a new neighbor, and I don't really want there to not be anything done. I mean, I think there should be something done, but let's just, uh, do it the right way. And that's, that's all I have, and thanks for letting me be a part of your state. I appreciate it.
Take a left, have me here.
Yes, sir.
Lynch? Lindegrave?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Lance Van Ladegraff, resident at 565 West Arroyo. I agree. I am questioning and ask you to stop this process and question. In all the presentations that I've attended at Reno Parks and Rec Commission, NAB, and at private and public forums, there has been no mention by city staff that there isn't even an existence of a Plumas Park master plan already adopted. Not once has the city Parks and Rec Department said, "Wait a minute, we should compare this with our adopted Plumas master plan for development." You've heard about it today? Why hasn't that been reviewed, brought forth by the staff? I can understand why OLS doesn't know about it, but certainly our staff should be aware of that master plan and how it says this park should be developed. So send this back to the drawing board and tell your staff, do your research, do your job. We already have a plan. Let's see how this one can be worked in coordination with it. Now, I have a drawing here. The hard line is the fence that's proposed, four-foot-long fence, four-foot-high, the entire length of the eastern side of Plumas Park, separating the soccer fields from the play area. There is no federal law requiring that fence, although staff seems to indicate that there might be a need for it. In fact, I've researched it, I have the laws, your city attorney can do it too. There's no law that requires that fence. I bring that up because at the Recreation and Parks Commission meeting, July 19th, 2012, there was a great deal of public comment when this topic was presented, and those minutes from that meeting are in your staff documents and reports today. Garrett Gordon suggested, after a lot of public comment, that this four-foot-long fence be removed. Your Parks and Recreation Commission members said, you can see it under, Julie Conway summarized the commission recommendations. One of the, one of their recommendations was reconsider this fence, its structure, its placement, its purpose, or its need. We don't need it, we don't want it, we don't want the park divided into two, and everybody has to channel through one entrance to get to the upper park and the lower park. No one has ever been injured stepping off of the historic rock wall separating the upper play area from the lower play area. When I'm there on weekends and I see the soccer moms and kids, they're back and forth, up and down, up to their cars, across there, coming down. They got a blanket, they got an infant on the blanket. Now they're going to be separated if you put that fence in. Please don't approve that fence. You can approve this whole project, delete that fence. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I'm going to close the public comment section. Did you turn one in, or did you just get here?
No, I didn't get back.
Okay, you came back. Your name's Christopher. You come on up.
Hi, Christopher Hill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd simply like to ask the question, why the rush? It seems to me that for something of this consequence, and certainly the liability aspects, the complexity relating to both the church, the church's needs and certainly the neighborhood needs has made, been made very evident here. And I'm not going to go into some of the more technical things that some of the other people have done, but I think it should be fairly clear from looking at some of the things that have been shown, and a couple of things I'm going to show you, that this is on a fast track that is simply unwarranted. It simply is not necessary at this point to move this quickly when there are so many questions existent. This is, excuse me, U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. I must be doing this wrong. There we go. And it states that basically their recommendations are guidelines more than hard rules, but they definitely have very strong guidelines and recommend that they be used for playgrounds. One of the things that they, excuse me, one of the things that they put out is, if you will notice, on the left-hand column there, they talk about age separation. And then they talk in the right-hand column at the top about conflicting activities, most specifically about high-level activities in older children and faster movement mixing with younger children and slower movements. Also, towards the bottom of that right column, you'll see sightlines, where they talk about, as Mr. Van Ladegraff just said, the idea that that fence is going to prevent sightlines. The, to my mind, unnecessary handicap ramp, which could be done any number of other ways more profitably, is going to destroy the sightlines across that upper park, and that is an issue for P for parents, for caregivers, for anyone who has multiple people that they're trying to take care of. This, I don't know if this will all show. Here is the plan. And if you will notice, A is a half-basketball court. I want to notice first, Roman number one, there points to that basketball court, which has now become a half-basketball court instead of a whole basketball court for no reason that has been determined to be profitable. You could use those four-square part, part, ha, excuse me, four-square courts and hopscotch on a full basketball court. A is a half-basketball court. B is hopscotch and four-square, and C is the playground equipment. There is no barrier, there is nothing in between those, especially the two parts, the A and B, that's going to prevent children from running back and forth and possibly injuring each other. That sort of thing needs a redesign. E over on the far-right side shows a much better access point for handicap, which doesn't require a lot of extra construction and does not involve destroying current beautiful stonework that's done there. I was going to reiterate what Mr. Van Ladegraff said about the Parks and Rec Commission, but it's very clear that there was any number, there were any number of people there, all of them concerned with the ramp, with the fence, with a redesign of this, and those things were reflected in both Ms. Conley's and, excuse me, Mr. Gordon's own comments afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming back. All right, now I'm going to bring up Julie, closing the public comment section now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, just reminded by the city attorney to disclose the fact that I have attended church at Snows. It's not my parish, but I have attended church there, and I'm, I can certainly make a decision on this without any conflict.
Mr. Guston?
I do attend church there. I also attend church at Good Shepherd. So, um, being transparent, I have no other affiliation with the school. My daughter graduated there 20 years ago, 25 years ago. Other than that, I have no other connection, so I can have an open mind and make a final decision.
Ms. Edgert?
No connection to the church and played at Billinghurst Junior High School Park up on the upper level many years, over the three years I attended Billinghurst.
But I'll answer the question you asked, Mr. Guston, earlier about age, but I won't go there. Uh, anyway, anyway, I, I go to church there. I'm not a member of the, I'm not a member of the parish, but I do go to church there, and I do have a granddaughter going to school there right now.
Same disclosures, Mr. George, Mr. Mayor.
Mine's the same as Mr. George's, also.
Should we disclose her, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Assey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Guston and I have an agreement. He'll go to two churches if I don't have to go to any. So I'm, I'm not sure if he only went to one, which one I'd have to go to, but I've never attended this church.
Yes, ma'am. Now we'll bring it back.
Thank you. For the record, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. And today, I'm here to give you some brief background on this item before you, and I also have with me our attorney, Craig Scah, Jeff Mann, who is our Parks Manager, as well as Garrett Gordon from Our Lady of Snows, to assist in any questions or clarifications that you might have. The proposal that you have before you today is a donation agreement to accept improvements to Plumas Park, and as you have heard and seen in the packet, these improvements include playground equipment, the renovation of the basketball courts, benches, and also ADA, appropriate ADA access. And in addition, it includes a proposal for fencing a portion of the playground equipment area, and that is also part of the proposal that would be included in the, in the donation agreement. The proposal is for a four-foot-high decorative fence, so I wanted to make clear what that would include. Also, that the information that has been sent to the city council is the background information from the minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, who met on July 19th and gave their feedback on this, the Reno Access Advisory Committee, who met on August 28th, as well as the NAB meeting on September 11th. So those meetings were included in a city council memo. The, I wanted to also make clear that these donations are not part of the city council conditions of approval related to the action on the Lander Street abandonment proposal that came to you on the April 25th, 2012 agenda. These are not part of, part of that condition of approval that you placed on the Our Lady of Snows organization. These improvements are part of the donation that is, uh, the Our Lady of Snows wishes to donate to the city of Reno and to the community. The, at this time, we have reviewed and looked at the playground equipment, and this was also brought before the Recreation and Parks Commission as far as the types of playground equipment and whether it meets the guidelines and standards, and the surfacing as well. And so we have been assured that that does meet the standards and would be installed by an appropriate and a certified playground inspector who does those kinds of playground installations. The fencing that has been talked about, and I want to focus on that, and then I'd like to call up Garrett Gordon as representative of the improvements to further highlight these improvements. The fencing is, and the guidelines that have been talked about, we are, we are recommending, as has been stated by OLS and their plan and their designer, that a, a four-foot-high or a fence be put around the playground area. It is not mandatory that we do that, so if city council would like to take that fencing out of the plan, you could do that. I did want to highlight, and I'd like to show this just again so that you can, we can clarify where that fencing exists in relationship to where the playground would be. This is Monroe on the left, and this is existing condition right now. So this is how the fence looks with the wall, and it, the wall does provide a barrier for youth running out into the street, if you will. And the proposal is that the playground equipment would be in this, in this area and further to the, the, uh, north. So I wanted just so that you could see, when we're talking about what's existing condition, this is the existing condition. Where the recommendation from OLS is not to remove the wall either on that side or to the south, and so that, that would, if city council so chose to retain the existing wall, we could do that, we could leave in the existing fence. However, we would need to remove the fence in front of the stairway that you see right there because that would prevent individuals from coming into the playground area. We are, at this point, we're proposing to remove that fence and just leave the wall. That would be a sufficient barrier. OLS's proposal is to put in that four-foot-high decorative fencing, which would be in this area here. So at this time, I would, that concludes the, the formal staff report. What I'd like to do is to have Garrett Gordon come up and talk and present a little bit more about the actual proposal and speak to any other clarifications on the, the recommendations of the donation, such as the fencing, the playground equipment, and that type of thing. Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the city council, for the record, Garrett Gordon, the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca, representing Our Lady of the Snows. So I have great, great news. You've heard some of it, but over the last six months, we've worked really hard, worked really hard to put together some funding to improve this park. Our Lady of the Snows, the money is not coming from Our Lady of the Snows. Our Lady of the Snows approached Western Nevada Community Foundation to put together a fund to hopefully raise money to improve this park that's in dire need of improvements and is not on any capital improvement plan in any of the near future. We were able to be awarded a grant from E.L. Cord Foundation for $50,000, Redfield Foundation for another 50, and from anonymous private donor 20. So we have $120,000 to work with. Redfield Foundation, as part of our grant, required us to hold $10,000 in a contingency fund for long-term maintenance and repair to make sure we put this, these improvements in, become city property. We have a fund for wear and tear and the improvement or maintenance. Some highlights of the donation agreement. We have to post a $50,000 bond to guarantee proper installation and cleanup, and I stress proper installation. I know there's some concern about possible violations of playground safety standards. I would refer you to Section 4.3 that says, "All improvements shall meet applicable legal requirements and industry standards, including without limitation to the requirements of the American Disabilities Act as amended and National Playground Safety Institute standards." I also would refer you to Section 6.2 that requires the playground equipment and other improvements, as applicable, be installed by a manufacturer approved by the contractor familiar with the installation of playground equipment- familiar with the installation of playground equipment, ADA requirements, and NPSI standards. Snow shall provide the city representative with appropriate manufacturer certification letters. So, I'll go on the record to say, we are required, as the party installing these improvements, to meet all applicable safety standards at our cost. And if we don't do it, there's a bond to provide security that it's done correctly. One-year warranty from the contractor, again, that contractor has to be playground certified, a one-year warranty to make sure it's installed correctly, and also, of course, proper insurance during construction. There's been a little confusion, I think, on exactly what's before you. I just wanted to state emphatically for the record, this donation agreement has nothing to do with lander abandonment, has nothing to do with the proposed license agreement of what hours we may or may not be able to use the park, and no connection to the parking agreement. This is strictly a donation from Western Nevada Community Foundation to the city of Reno. We've worked diligently. Andy Kucherik, who's our safety coordinator at Our Lady of the Snows, has worked with staff for months, tinkering with the plans and coming up with something that the city, I think, believes in. We've also went to, as mentioned by staff, Park and Recs Commission. NAB held a neighborhood workshop at Our Lady of the Snows. And also, this plan went to the Access Advisory Commission. Let me hit some highlights of the plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions with the help of probably Jeff Mann because I know he's been in the trenches on this one. So, the idea here is to keep the character of the park, but certainly provide some very necessary upgrades. You'll see down the middle, ADA ramp. That's important. There is no ADA ramp currently at this location. There was concern by Parks and Recs Commission, is this the right location? Does it make sense to put it down the middle? We said, hey, Our Lady of the Snows is neutral. City staff, you tell us where this belongs. Went to the neighborhood, went to the Access Advisory Committee, the city of Reno. They approved it. They said, unfortunately, due to slope, due to other considerations, this is the best location for the ramp. So, we said, okay. Regarding the fencing, the original plan included fencing along this eastern boundary, eight-foot fence. Again, our folks working with your city staff, went to the Park and Recs Commission. They said, does it really have to be eight feet? You know, can it, we don't want the fence at all, but can you lower it? So, the comments referenced in the minutes were, yeah, we take a look at it, and we did. It's now, at the request of city staff, a four-foot fence. And also, the addition of a fence on the south side to prevent if a kid travels down those stairs, there has to be a barrier between the road and the playground equipment. So, installing a fence there as well. Concern about half-court versus full-court. Our research shows, and in working with staff, that city parks are very successful if you have one full court for the older kids, you know, kind of a rough-and-gruff game to play full court, aggressive ball games there. On this side, half-court for some of the smaller kids, coupled with hopscotch, four-square, and then the playground equipment. There will be no trees removed whatsoever. And another really good comment by Parks and Recs Commission, and I think this actually came from a resident, said, you guys are kind of crazy. Where's the benches? There should be some benches for moms to watch their kids play. We said, great idea. We kind of overlooked that. So, now there's three benches. One of them has to have a backing to be ADA compliant. But I would say that's one example of how we've incorporated comments and discussion from the neighborhood. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Again, I think that this is really exciting. And when we went to the NAB, it was interesting. Before my item, there was a lady requesting money to improve Jesse Beck. And, you know, begging, pleading for the money for needed improvements. I was happy to come up afterward and say, you know, we fortunately have raised this money. The money's here, ready, willing to move forward, and we need to move forward this fall. That's why we can't continue it. I think we've gone through plenty of public process. Certainly, there's flexibility in the agreement from staff that if there's any tweaks or changes that can be made prior to construction. So, thank you for your time. I'm here for any questions.
You know, on one side of the, somebody showed a picture a while ago of the fence up against the rock wall. It's not, it's on the north side, and then the sidewalk, and then the parking. That fence has been, from what I'm understanding, has been illegal for the 48 years I've lived here. So, I just want, I mean, we're not moving that fence or doing anything, are we? And why are you moving that fence inside? You showed a picture of the block, the stone wall, and the fence is on the outside. Looks like it's 17 or 18 inches away, 24. Now you want to move it inside the stone wall. Why is that?
So, I may defer that. I know Jeff Mann's been involved in this, in these plans. But, so currently, the plan is to remove all the fences except for add a new fence along this boundary and a new fence along this boundary. You're right. A lot of those fences are grandfathered. They don't meet setback requirements. They don't meet a number of requirements. The idea here is to put this fence right behind the rock wall. So, one, for a safety issue, my understanding from staff, is it's a hazard. It's a big rock wall. Kids playing, you know, come and fall off. But also, for convenience, folks watching soccer games can sit on the rock wall and actually have something to lean back on. This fence that we'll be adding on this side is, again, because it's close to playground equipment, requires some kind of barricade. There was no requirement from staff to add a fence here along the west side or here along the north side.
There any fence there now on the north side?
I think there is a fence on the north side right now, so that would come down.
That was a picture somebody showed that the fence was real close to the rock wall and indicated somebody could get pinned in it or something.
And you may want to ask staff, because as far as Snow's is concerned, we're neutral on where you guys want the fences. You know, we were neutral on where the ADA ramp goes. The more fences, the more cost to us, but we're doing our best to put it together.
I don't like fences at all, so. Questions, anybody? Mr. Guston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That was going to be my, Julie, can I ask you a couple of questions first? That was going to be my focus, I guess, because I heard person after person come up and talk about postponing it because of the safety factor in the fences. And then I heard one representative say they didn't want fences. And I'm wondering why we're forcing the fence? Why are we doing that?
Again, Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director. The, as was mentioned about the fencing, around playground equipment, there is a guideline to have some type of barrier between the playground area and, in this case, where the road is. We don't have to have the fencing. It's not required to have the fencing. The only area that we would recommend, and I'm going to put this back up. You know, we can, if you can show this. So, the short answer to your question is, we don't have to have the fencing there if the council would prefer not to have the fencing there. The only thing that we would want to do is, on the Monroe side, as you see right now, existing conditions, we're going to be, what we would propose is put the playground equipment here, and there would be a walkway down into the street. So, we either leave this fence and cut it off here and put a gate in here, or there's another option here is, if we put no other black fence in, what we would do is, we could take this fence out, as was suggested by the mayor, and just put a gate right here at the top of the stairway. That way, there's a barrier for, between the kids that are in the playground and the street. That's all we would need.
Because as I think I heard from the testimony from people, if you put the fence inside the wall, then you have to be 72 feet from that fence.
And we don't have, we don't have to have a fence there.
Okay.
We don't have to. But we would want to have a fence right at the stairway. That's the only place. That's the only, I would say, area that we would want to have a fence.
Yeah, I have a different reason for a fence being there, and that is simply because of the times we live in. The children need to be safe when they're there. And if you didn't have a fence, it'd be pretty easy for somebody with ill intent to reach over, grab a kid, and take off. So, we had one of those in the northwest just very recently, so I can understand that. So, the fences don't have to be there then. So, it sounds to me like they're, actually, both sides have made some progress because when Mr. Gordon stood up, he felt necessary to say that, nothing to do with the Lander abandonment. And there wasn't one person that stood up and said anything about the Lander abandonment. They were concerned, rightfully so, about the playground and how it's safe for the children. So, I think on both sides are making some progress in terms of what they really care about, and that's about the kids. So, the plan that's drawn up now is a guideline, or it's not set in asphalt or concrete.
You mean the playground plan or the?
Yeah, the playground plan, the three courts, one full court, which I had mentioned before, because I know a previous speaker had come up and said, you know, why make three half courts? But I have a full court. I know the mayor doesn't like to run full court, but some people do. Some people like to play full-court basketball because they do it over at Monroe School. So, that makes sense. But regarding the ADA, and Mr. Gordon said that that's what the Access Group said to do. And I know we have a very prominent member on our Parks and Recreation Commission, who sat there before and is very involved in that, was, was that the general sentiment from the Parks and Recreation Commission, too, that that was an appropriate place?
What they asked us to do is to go back to the Access Advisory Committee because they also said that they are not the experts on this. So, they asked us to go back to the Access Advisory Committee and seek their opinion. And what we did, and even beyond that, is we had, you're speaking of Commissioner Ariscotta on the Recreation and Parks Commission. So, we met Mr. Ariscotta and Scott Youngs, who's previously been on the Access Advisory Committee and is up at University of Nevada Reno. And we met him on site and talked about the location of that ramp. And they came to a conclusion that that would be even, you know, we went further and said, hey, how, is there additional opinion on this? And they concluded that, you know, this would be the best location for this ramp. And the Access Advisory Committee agreed as well.
Okay, let me ask you the question because it repeatedly came up from comments that people made, and I think pretty heartfelt, too, about the fact that there may be a better plan. And when you looked at this and you looked at the Plumas Park plan and the fact of a better plan, I'm sure usually better plans mean more money, et cetera. But how do you, how do you fold both of these in? The plan and $110,000 that you have now with the $10,000 contingency maintenance and what may be considered as being the better plan? Because there's no money, I think we talked about this at council before. Back when you look at '92, I'm sure that the intent was then that as money comes available to the city, we will improve the park, et cetera. Just look at the growth. I think the statement was made about the upper portion would no longer be soccer. We don't have enough soccer fields. That's why council people here have been so adamant about building additional soccer fields. They're used all weekend, I know, upper and lower. So, taking one of those away, which was talked about in the '92 plan, would probably not be reasonable and acceptable now. But fold that '92 plan into what we're doing now and give me the best guess scenario as to how it fits, and is it better to do it this way than, because we are now, what, 14 years? Or 12, what, 10 years from that plan, excuse me, 10 years from that plan? So, with knowing what that plan was and how that was set out and what's set forward now, your comments, please.
Part of that relates to, my response is, it relates to what the city council and the community did with the Recreation Facilities Plan in 2007, which was agreed by the city council in 2008 and adopted in 2008. So, you're absolutely right. The philosophy is, as donations or offers or grants come in, is to look at them in relationship to the goals and priorities of that Recreation Facilities Plan. So, specifically, what would change if we incorporated the 1992 Plumas Neighborhood Plan and this particular proposal is that we would, we would look at an overall master plan for the whole site, which one of the citizens presented to you. Here's my idea of what an overall master plan for the site would be. So, whenever we go into a neighborhood or look at renovating a facility, you know, we would look at the, potentially, the entire site. That's what we would do. We would look at the entire site and have identified money to hire somebody to do an overall master plan and say, what do we want to keep? What do we want to get rid of? And remember, part of this is the Plumas Gym and the parking lot. So, we look at, we would be looking at the whole site. And that's what would change. We would basically start from, and I don't want to say a blank slate because you have existing facilities, but that's what we would do.
I get if you looked the whole thing, but I'm just trying to fold in the idea because I'm sure some people are convinced that there's a better way to do that. But I don't know what that is. And you and Jeff Mann are the recreation experts. And so, if there is other comments, you need to make them to us because this, the park right now is, I mean, I even hesitate calling it a park. It's in my ward. It's in ill repair, and the courts aren't playable, et cetera, et cetera. So, if the fencing, I guess I'll come back to one thing. People talk so much about the safety aspect. Are you prepared to tell the council or to stand in front of the council and say, look, if we don't put that fence in because of the 72 inches and we make the slight adjustments, leave the cyclone fence there, put maybe a gate at the top, which I like that idea simply because it's not an easy, and I'm overplaying this maybe a little bit, but I am really concerned about kids, little kids in the neighborhood. You know, parents just turn their head and the kid's gone. And making that easy for anybody would do that. Because I know we sent policemen out there. We had certain people who like to sunbathe in scanty attire in the park and tell them, you know, that wasn't the place to do it because kids play there. So, my point is, is if we can make these changes, that inside fence, Snow said they're not married to it. You're saying you're not married to it. The neighborhood says they're not married to it. So, I think that's an improvement just by saying, look, we're not going to force the fence. But, back to my point, are we, are we safe if we build that playground? And are the kids safe?
There is always a risk in any public area like this of, you know, especially if you have a public space. You know, I can't stand before you and say that there wouldn't be some risk to the city. However, however, because we have a wall there, if we did not have a wall, the answer would be different. If we had no wall, I would say we would need some type of barrier between the street and the play area. Because we have a wall there, we have a higher, there is more protection there. So, I feel more comfortable on that. And also, to the west, there is a barrier. To the south, there is, there is a wall there, and that wall, you know, it falls off three, probably three to four feet.
Into the soccer field.
So, optimally, it would be good to have a fence along that so the kids won't go over off into that three-to-four-foot drop. However, it's not a mandatory requirement. And so, that's why we said originally that it's not, it's not a mandatory requirement to have the fence. OLS presented that as an additional proposal as a safety factor. We said, you know, that would be good to have that, and that's why we looked at it in that way.
Sounds to me like both sides say, you know, there's not a fence necessary. Okay, that's really, that's really.
That's how we would look at it. And I want to say one other thing back to your comment about what would it look like? How would this change back to the '92 plan or '95 plan? Is, if you look at it today, we do not have enough soccer fields. So, I would not recommend, we would not recommend to the Recreation and Parks Commission and to city council, working with the public, to remove those soccer fields unless we had some other soccer fields to replace them. I mean, we would need to replace those soccer fields with something before we would remove them. If anything, what we might do is say, you know, maybe there, it would reduce the number of courts or, you know, something like that, depending upon use. But we know and we've heard that there is a need for more play, active play equipment out in this area. There used to be a playground in the area. So, when, that's why when the Snows came forward and brought this forward, it fulfilled what was there before as far as the play equipment.
And I think what the people said, and rightfully so, is their main thing is a safety concern. And I think we can address that, but I'd like to hear what other council people have to say.
And one other thing I wanted to mention to address, one of the items, the comments that were brought up by the citizen that previously spoke, that the proposal that the Snows has brought forward for the license agreement that is going, it's tentatively scheduled, it is scheduled for the Recreation and Parks Commission next Tuesday night. They're out, they're proposing a 7:30 to 3:30 time period for their use. They're proposing a 7:30 to 3:30 time period for their use. So that was a concern that one of the citizens brought up about not having it extended too long, so that it wouldn't be open to the public.
You know, thank you for bringing that. I was going to talk about that later, if somebody from Snows came up. But I think that lady that spoke this morning in public comment was absolutely correct. I mean, I understand that the school's going to use it the primary times when they're at recess, but also, it's a public park. And so at 3:30, when other kids are out from Mount Rose, I don't see, you know, they may have some comments about that, but it seems that's very accommodating to other kids in the neighborhood who don't go to Our Lady of Snows.
Ms. Hadrop.
Julie, you've spoken to this quite a bit already, but could you make reference to the 95, I think it was Lance, I didn't write your last name down, but he had indicated in his discussion that the 95 Neighborhood Plan had been totally ignored to their experience in the discussions and the meetings that had been had. So can you talk through, kind of briefly again, the reference points that you made throughout the discourse in trying to come to some kind of mitigation? How the 95 Plan was considered when evaluating this proposal?
We did not consider the details as far as the proposal from OLS. They presented a proposal, and the background of the 95 Plan certainly was not as detailed as what was presented to us. So that's something that we didn't go through in detail. And with OLS, as far as how this should be designed, what the recommendation was, is to work with the neighborhood to make sure that it was compatible. I guess that's the best way to say it. But we staffed and not bring that forward and say, you know, this is what we should do, as far as the details of this particular plan. And that's something that if, you know, again, the community and the neighborhood, if that's something council wants us to do in further, greater detail, we certainly can do that. And have OLS do that in greater detail.
At this time, would you be able to identify any specific areas that you think might be in discord between the two?
I wouldn't say in detail, you know, that, one of the things that the plan talked about is, and it was referenced by the citizens, is the outreach and all of that. And that's something that I know Snows has spoken to already, of how many people got involved with the plan. And what was mentioned is that there were several thousand people that were involved with this. In this case, that was not part, that was, in this case, the OLS, you know, they met with the NAB. They didn't go out to all, as many people that were involved in the 1995 Plan. So that would be different. That would be different. I mean, you'd have a greater number of people, as well as the community that live around there, involved with that process.
Many of the neighbors that spoke made reference to the ASTM, and the multitude of areas that are not in compliance, not just the fence, but others. Can you speak to those and clarify?
Yeah, I'm going to call up Jeff on that. We, as was stated in the agreement, and we do know that the playground and the surfacing is in compliance. Jeff, can you speak to that?
For the record, Jeff Mann, Parks Recreation Community Services. ASTM is American Society for Testing Materials. They publish voluntary guidelines in a wide range, or variety of subject areas, from manufacturing to playgrounds. Historically, our practice has been, and those are voluntary standards, they're not required unless legally adopted by the state legislature or some agency of the federal government. Nevada has not adopted any ASTM for use in public playgrounds. However, historically, our practice has been to adhere to the ASTMs, which relate to size, configuration, and specifications for the play equipment itself, and for critical fall heights, which relate to the safety service. All of our playgrounds meet those two ASTMs. The fencing ASTM is relatively new. It was adopted in 2009, I think, as a voluntary standard. To the best of my knowledge, only two states require that, 48 do not. And primarily, the reasoning being that we have a number of parks, a number of existing playgrounds and parks where if we wanted to comply with that voluntary standard, we couldn't fit a playground because of the configuration and dimensions necessary for spacing between the fence and the playground, and between the fence and other structures, like a wall or a tree. If we were going to impose 2049 here, we couldn't fit a playground on this site unless we took a soccer field. So...
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question, I hope, and that's for Ted. So can I ask you a question? I want to make sure I got one of your comments correct. You had said something about you feel we're in violation of NRS 278-160?
Yes, sir. Well, 278-160 is the NRS code that allowed or called for the adoption of the Historic Master Plan. The Historic Master Plan requires historic resources be protected and their overall character maintained when possible. So the reason I feel you're in violation in this case is the historic rock wall, which was built by the WPA. The WPA changed the state of Nevada. Without the WPA investment in Nevada, the state wouldn't be what it is today. So we feel it is a valuable historic resource, and should be protected when possible. The fact that there's another site available for this playground, and another site available for ADA access, that would leave the rock wall unmolested.
So I'm just curious, how is this plan? Tell me where this plan is affecting the rock wall.
Yes, sir. You're using the rock wall as a barrier for a playground. That would make the rock wall an attractive nuisance for children.
Hasn't it always been a playground?
No, sir. Well, there is one specific area of that upper section that has been a playground. Now that that four-foot fencing is stretching across the entire upper section, the whole upper section becomes a playground area. And while that has always been there, the historic plan was adopted after the playground was installed originally. So had the Historic Master Plan been in effect when the original playground was installed, it's possible that the playground would have been installed in a different location. The Plumas Park Neighborhood Plan, that calls for a playground that would protect the historic, not only protect the rock wall, but protect children from using the rock wall as a playground.
I'm curious, I just want to, you're saying that because you're putting, we're replacing an existing playground, it changes the character of the wall?
No, sir. The ADA ramp changes the character of the wall.
Okay, so that's your concern, that they're taking out a two-foot section, or a four-foot section, to put in the ADA ramp?
No, sir. My concern is that it should be, the overall character should be protected when possible. So the question is, can we provide ADA access to the park in another location that would leave the rock wall unmolested? And the answer to that question is yes, and we would use the plan from the Plumas Park Neighborhood Plan.
Except for the fact that we took it to our Access Advisory Commission.
Yes, sir.
And this is the one, and this is the one that they said that would be best.
They weren't presented with the Plumas Park Neighborhood Plan, as Julie...
I'm not talking about a plan that was before. They went out there and looked at the conditions right now, and said, this is the best spot for an, I don't see anybody in here that needs this ramp. So I don't know how we have any ability to overstep what they say.
It's not a question of whether, it's a question...
It's a question that you want them to move it somewhere that they don't feel is appropriate.
They weren't offered that as an opportunity.
I don't agree with you. Okay, I understand what your point was.
So the...
I understand what your point was.
Jeff Mann, the Recs Department wants ADA access to the park. The neighbors love the idea of ADA access to this park. There is more than one opportunity to provide ADA access to this park. The current plan...
Tell us where it is.
It would be, there's already ADA parking on Walker Street, next to restrooms. So if you put a ramp where it's currently proposed, that ramp would only be accessible 45% of all available park hours, because Our Lady of Snows blocks Lander Street. If you were to move the ADA access, thank you, if you were to move the ADA access here, where the restrooms already are, you would have ADA access 100% of all open park hours. Not only that, ADA access on the top level, if it's a soccer parent who needs the assistance to get into the park, they would only be able to get into the upper level. If their child was playing on the lower soccer field, they wouldn't really be able to watch the soccer. So this plan, in terms of ADA accessibility, improves significantly on the plan presented by Our Lady of Snows.
Except the ADA people don't think that's the best place. That's all I've got to say.
They weren't offered that opportunity.
Thank you for the addition. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Heship.
Just staff, because one of the comments that we heard was, just like the previous speaker, did staff look at this Plumas, our Plumas Park Master Plan, or the Historic Resource Plan when they were looking at these designs?
Again, Julie Conway, for the record, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. We did not look in detail at the 1995 Plan, in detail. We, as far as in detail related to the OLS proposal. We knew about it, but as far as meeting, looking at how it might meet directly, and the specificity, if you will, or how it talked about the overall neighborhood plan and the park plan.
Okay, so do we know today whether it complies or doesn't?
I don't know if it would comply or not at this point. And I would say, Claudia, go ahead.
If I can jump in, Claudia Hansen, planning and engineering manager. Let me know if I can get the overhead. So this is the plan from the 95 Plan, and is, the park plan from the 95 Neighborhood Plan, where it's listed as a proposed improvement. It was never adopted as the final plan of how it was going to be built. In the wording referencing it, it states, "The residents want additional playgrounds, some tables, and barbecue pits, walking paths, and a gazebo on what is currently the upper field." So it was discussing taking out one of the fields and putting in these proposed plans, but it was never adopted as the final plan.
And then, we, I don't know if this is for you, Claudia, but the agreement does say that the improvements shall be installed in accordance with Exhibit B, and an architect drew up Exhibit B. Are we certain that Exhibit B complies with National Playground Safety Institute standards?
Jeff, I'm going to, I believe it does. I'm going to defer to Jeff Mann, because that's very important to us, to anything that we put in, we have to make sure of, so. Jeff?
For the record, again, Jeff Mann, Parks Manager. As I mentioned earlier, the playground safety standards, ASTM standards, that we have historically abided by voluntarily, are those related to the playground, structure itself, and critical fall zones for the safety service. The proposed improvements that are before you today do comply with those standards.
And then the minutes indicated that they were going to go to the neighborhood for a workshop, that was done?
I'm going to refer to Gordon on that, and when that was.
For the record, Garrett Gordon. Following the Parks and Recs Commission meeting, we identified the date that the Paris Center was available, and scheduled a neighborhood workshop. We used the email addresses from the serious meetings we've had. We have a pretty good email list of neighbors, and in fact, noticed it. I will, you know, go on record that it was poorly attended. I was copied on emails that indicated from residents that you should boycott the meeting, because we don't like the plan. But we did do it. There was, Bill Gaul from City of Reno was there, as well as, I would say, between five and eight residents, and five to seven Snows representatives.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? Yes, sir.
The licensing agreement that's coming forward, is that for the entire upper area? Is that what is proposed?
For the record, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. Yes, it is. That proposal right now has not changed. And the agenda has been posted, and the staff report and appropriate attachments will be out on or before this Friday.
And that calls for times of, what, 7:30 to 3:00?
7:30 to 3:30 is a proposal that will be reviewed by the Recreation and Parks Commission, and then that will come before the city council as appropriate, whatever their advisory recommendation is.
Okay, thank you. My only comments, and the upper part that we're talking about is going to be open, except certain hours to certain people. But the rest of the time, Saturdays, Sundays, and everything, the whole park will be open to everybody, with no hour restrictions. I think the fences around the upper part, personally, if you got rid of those metal fences, I'd love it just as much more, and not put that fence across down by the rock wall, because I've sat on that rock wall and watched soccer. The fence around the soccer fields down on the lower, I think you need to keep that fence down in those areas, because the balls will be flying out in the street and everything else, and it slopes off. So eliminate that fence, as far as I'm concerned, eliminate that fence on the top part, where the east wall is, and let them sit up there and lay back, or whatever they want to do, or they can sit on the ground on the lower, and lean up against the stone wall. And the fence along where Snows is, that wrought iron fence, get rid of it. Get rid of the one on the west side, or the north and south sides of it. The playground is despicable. The courts are just awful. The equipment's awful. The picture that somebody showed about where the fence was up against the rock wall tells me that that's been there illegally, or not illegally, but because there's no standards. But they put, the city put that fence up against that wall. Well, you take it out, and you're not moving out into the streets, you don't need another wall. You got a concrete, you got a stone wall there. So personally, I think the park's open to all. I think we're very thankful somebody's given us money to upgrade it, because if not, they ought to condemn the upper top part and not let anybody play on it, because it'll break people's ankles and ruin it and everything else. So if they don't do that, if we don't get these improvements, then I think I'm going to bring back that we just close that top part altogether. Thank you. Now, any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Heship. Mr. Heship?
Just a couple of comments. I want to make sure I understand, when this playground goes into construction with this design, what, are you going to have a certified playground? I thought I heard somebody say certified playground designer, to make sure that all the requirements are met?
Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. Yes, and that the installer is certified.
Right.
Yes, and they, OLS is required to provide that installer. So that it is done appropriately. And we know, because we've dealt with this all the time, we know who the certified installers are. So we will be able to assure that as well. And if I may, just to clarify, since it was brought up, if I may clarify on the fence and the direction from city council, and that we would have, as part of this project, remove the fences, we would recommend the one area, and I want to get council direction on this, the one area that is on this side right here, off of Monroe, is that there be a fence around this staircase, because there is no barrier into the street. So a gate, I shouldn't say a fence, a gate, so that we can have a barrier between the play area and the street. Would that be acceptable to city council? That is one area that we would recommend putting in a gate.
I wouldn't have a problem with it personally.
Thank you for that.
But now, the rest of that fence, and down the other side, around the upper part, the fences, that metal fence should take a hiatus. But on the lower field, it should stay.
We understand your direction. Thank you.
Mr. Heship, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the other comment I have is Scott Young, actually, we've used Scott before. I mean, he's pretty much an expert in ADA improvements, and he understands the logistics. Having said that, I mean, if he wasn't presented with an option that could change his mind, I'd be okay with a continuance, but only for two weeks, to get Scott out there to make sure he understood all the options. But knowing Scott, I'm sure he considered him. But at the same time, I would be okay with that, Dan. I mean, it's your ward, if you're looking for comments.
If I may, offer, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Director, we did... If I may offer, Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Director, we did present options on site as far as looking at over on Walker, and, you know, looking at other alternatives, and if you have more questions about that, I'd be happy to bring Jeff Mann back up, but we did look at other alternatives beyond that.
What about the option this gentleman just talked about?
Well, we looked at Walk, on the corner of Walker and Lander. Is that, that's correct, isn't it, Jeff? So they looked at the other alternatives and how it might or might not affect the ADA access.
Jeff Mann, Parks Manager. Coming in December, we will be presenting an audit of all of our park sites as related to the 2010 ADA standards, which go into effect this year. I met on site with, specific to this plan, I met on site with Scott Youngs and Joe Ariscotta, and we talked about potential locations for an ADA ramp to service the upper terrace, which is where the basketball courts and the playground will be. The ramp that's in the designs is really the best option, it's really the only real option that works for that upper terrace from the street. The north and south streets, Walker and Monroe, are nine and a half percent, which is too steep for ADA parking, and if we tried to come down either of those streets, we would still need a ramp along one of those streets. Having said that, when we come back with, in December, with the overall plan, there is no single ADA access point which will service all three terraces of this park. So we know that we are still going to have ADA issues with this park, but as far as the upper terrace goes, the ramp that's designed is the best option.
Would you describe Joe Ariscotta for me? Because Joe was a young man when he went to high school there and everything, or went to school there. Would you describe Joe Ariscotta, he also worked for the state, going around proving ADA assessment, he's part of the reasons we got all these curb cuts around town at the corners where wheelchairs can go in? Would you describe Joe?
Joe Ariscotta and Scott Youngs are both confined to a wheelchair.
That's right. Both of them are confined to a wheelchair. Both of them lobbied very hard for the ramps at the corners of every corner you see in this town now, where we put a ramp up. Those people were in charge of them. They've also, Joe works at the
The VA.
The VA Hospital, because of the handicap stuff over there, he also was on the state and doing it. So I think those people would look at it very closely. Mr. Guston.
Yeah, and just further, but to Mr. Ariscotta, he was also a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Board in Ward One, and was a valuable member, and I was pleased when he put his application in for Parks and Recreation, because he does bring a whole different perspective to this. Okay, I think both sides have said about the fences, they want to get the fence, I didn't know, let me just ask you one question, Lance, are you talking about the cyclone fences also?
We're not an issue with the cyclone.
That's what I didn't think, so, okay.
That new fence.
I got it, okay.
Get rid of that cyclone around the stone wall, Jesus.
Well, you know, it's not the most attractive, but there's a
It's ugly.
There's a safety feature to it, to me, but, so I'm going to suggest that, what other people have suggested, that the fencing is not certainly a requirement. Mr. Gordon, are you okay with that? Okay. And go ahead and approve the staff recommendation to accept the donation, but then to make sure that as we have, I think at Labor here talked about safety and making sure that everything is put in the way that, what word I want to use, is compatible with the most safety, safe and efficient park that we can have, obviously, sorry I got tongue-tied on that. And to go ahead and move forward on this, and again, because the comments people, when Mr. Hashef talked about, in fact, waiting two weeks, I think we can ask Scott to go out and take a look, but if there is an issue, then bring it back. But to go ahead with this approval now, the staff recommendation to accept this donation, and get rid of the impediment that I think most of the people had talked about today, if not eighty or ninety percent of them, about the fencing, they had a real problem with that because of the safety issue, and you're telling us, as a City Council, that that fencing eliminated, the park can be completed, and we're not in jeopardy, or any more jeopardy than we should be in any normal park activity. So I'm going to go ahead and approve that staff recommendation.
Have a second. Have a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do want to thank Our Lady of Snows. I mean, just on a separate issue, Moana, we've gone out, I mean, Richard Jay's gone out and raised, you know, over $200,000 for the soccer fields out there. We need soccer fields, so I'm not in favor of changing the plan to remove the fields, but the bottom line is the condition of the equipment out there. And I think it's been kind of lost in the discussion, but obviously, with the fiscal issues we all face, I just want to thank the church for coming forward and doing something with this equipment and the park. I think it's going to be a real enhancement to the neighborhood. I think it's a safety issue right now with the asphalt, the way it is, you've got graffiti, and we'll talk about the couch being out there for, I believe, one of the public speakers said they had called, and it'd been a month, and it's still out there. I've got park maintenance issues on the agenda later on today, I do think that's an issue, but I just want to thank the Our Lady of Snows for coming forward and making this donation in the different foundations to improve the park.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I was a little remiss, I have three gentlemen to my left who have worked tremendously hard in putting this together. Tim Fuchs, Principal of Our Lady of the Snows, Greg Higgins, School Board Member, and Don Bergen from the parish have been in countless meetings trying to get this right, and going out there and raising the money. So they've done really a great, great job here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Hashef.
Dan, I want to just clarify the motion. Are you saying just remove all the cyclone fencing around the upper side, around the upper playground? Don't put in any of the wrought iron, the black fencing, as a condition? Yes, I am, because it changes, the seventy-two inches that was talked, I had to infant item today about the park and how it changes the whole plan if you do, if you put that wrought iron. I agree the wrought iron would look better, but I think it's too drastic a change to the park. And are you including the gate? I'm sorry, I did not say that, as recommended by Ms. Conway, the gate, yes, at the top. And let me say one thing about the fence, I sort of, just for discussion, I like the fence on the east side. That would be on Monroe? Because, no, on the east side, which is where it overlooks the
Soccer fields.
Soccer fields. Because what I think you have is kids could play there and they could just fall off. That's the only place where there's a drop-off. And to me, that was a fence that would just stop the kids from falling off of that ledge. The other ones, it's a raised one, and I understand everything about that, but that's the only one that I thought made a lot of sense here, was to put one there. You know, and I'm going to let the Parks and Recreation Department decide that, because the people from the neighborhood said, you know, they were only concerned about the other wrought iron fence was going in there, and they, that's why I asked that question, the other fencing. So whatever is, again, gets to the safety factor and is the best for that park, I would be in favor of that, obviously. So the motion be to To examine. Remove those, but let the Parks and Rec Department decide on the eastern fence? Yes. Okay. I just wanted to That's fine. With the gate up top where the stairs are.
That little wall's, what, three feet up?
Yeah.
About two or three feet up.
Yeah.
And the kids are jumping off of it all the time and
Right, exactly.
And if you move that, you put the rock wall, and then you come in twenty inches, then you're getting into the basketball courts and everything.
I would put it right by the rock wall, just like they said, so people can sit on the rock wall and lean against it when they're walking the
Or let them sit in the dirt and lean against the rock wall.
But again, you know, that's fine. Both sides agree that that's, so that's fine, so that's the motion.
And part of your motion is we're going to send Scott and Joe back out. I mean, this gentleman, I don't know if he's correct or not, but I think it'd be prudent to go back out and make absolutely sure he considered all the information when he came to his conclusion.
Yeah, and then, like I said, we go with the motion, then if there is something that we really need to concern, then it needs to be on our next agenda, after Joe and Scott take a look at it.
All right, I have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. I'm kind of happy we delayed this next one till 2:30, because a friend of mine had to sit here for forty-five minutes. All right, now we'll go to item J5. That'd be the curb system. We have somebody here that wishes to speak on J5. Brian Davenport.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to decline the speaking this time. I like to hear it, fifteen percent. I didn't know the actual protocol without the speaking at the end, and I really do not want to speak at the end.
I'll let you speak at the end.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Flansburgh. Mr. Hashef, take over a minute.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Manager Klinger, for the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. On the agenda today was a consideration of a time extension. As of yesterday, we received a letter from Curb Systems that provided, which I will provide to the clerk, that states that Curb Systems has addressed the issues in their notice to correct dated May 3, and they state that they do not require or need an extension of time. Staff has not been able to evaluate if the corrections have been completed to verify the representations, but at this time, Curb System is not requesting additional time.
Any questions? Any staff reports? Mrs. Fraser.
Yeah, John, one of the questions from last meeting that I had, have they secured the bond required under the contract?
Curb Systems is here to answer questions, so
I'm asking staff.
We have not received the bond at this time.
Any other questions?
Well, can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Bonding requirements are pretty straightforward. If we could have a response from Curb, is bonding available at this point in the work, the progress that has been made, would bonding even be achievable at this point? Is there a vacancy there that needs to be addressed?
For the record, Terry Oliver, Principal with Curb, and in answer to your question, the bond was not put in place. We were notified in August by the city that the bond had not been in place. We immediately went to a bonding company, and we discussed the options available to us at that point in time, and the bonding company said, well, how much of the installation and fabrication has been complete? We said over ninety percent, and the bonding company says that they would be unable to place a bond on work that is already completed. We have since that point in time completed all of the installation and fabrication work, so there is no availability to get a construction bond for work already completed.
So I guess Yes, sir, Mr. Guston. I just might, as long as Mr. Oliver's up there, my only question is what John referred to about the letter. So you're not requesting an extension of time?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hashef?
That was going to be my question. I mean, from my understanding, Terry, it's your position that you've done everything you're supposed to do?
Yes, we've worked very diligently to comply with what the city had asked us to do in the notice to correct, and when we originally had asked for the extension in time, there were technical issues that we weren't certain that we were going to be completed in time, but we were able to figure out those solutions, and we're finishing those solutions up and those installations today.
And so, so our staff had a chance to verify that the performance is complete?
No, staff has not had an opportunity to verify that. We stand to cooperate fully with staff on the verification. We understand that the city and staff will want to verify that, in fact, all of those things have been complied with.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fraser, go ahead.
Yeah, Terry, question, because they weren't working yesterday, and they weren't working in front of City Hall, and I keep getting it on my Twitter feed, pictures, I can show you pictures upon pictures of these things not working. So I just want to be clear, for the record, that everything that you guys, so by midnight tonight, tomorrow, we shouldn't have any problems. We'll have a functioning, operating parking kiosk city, parking kiosk system in the city of Reno.
That is correct, and we were working yesterday, and we were working today. In fact, we've been doing inspections all day today, we've been monitoring, doing kind of last-minute connections. The city has to participate with us on some of the electrical connections, and they were doing that today, we were working with them. We did see the photographs that were posted about outages, and as we were doing the upgrades and the retrofit work, there were kiosks that were out periodically, and there will continue to be kiosks today until we are totally finished, that will periodically be out as we're doing an upgrade, doing a software download. So that just happened, and probably the kiosk that you took a picture of probably was down.
So tomorrow, I'll wake up and the parking problems will be solved here in the city, correct?
I certainly hope so. We've worked very hard towards that goal.
So no more outages on the kiosks?
No. This is an electronic system that uses a Windows operating system, and Windows is Windows, so occasionally, there may be some problem with that. There are the typical coin jams that are endemic to any kind of system, and people go around and vandalize these and stuff things into the coin jams. And the card swipes for credit cards, they are only good for, I don't know, X thousand of swipes, so occasionally, they will be worn out, so we anticipate that's just routine in the system. But these problems that the city pointed out to us in the notice to correct, we have addressed every one of those, and those should not be the causes of any outages.
So we'll see you tomorrow, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hashef.
Okay, so let me ask a couple of questions, then, based on the letter that was sent. All four phases of the installation are completed? I don't know who wants to answer that.
Mr. Mayor, Pat Cashill on behalf of Curb. May I address
Whichever, whoever wants to
Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Iasi.
Identify yourself for the record.
Pat Cashill, again, for Curb Enterprises. May I address the extension issue, and then I would like to yield to Frank Terrasis to explain what we've done to come into compliance. May I proceed?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
As far as the extension is concerned, we have notified the city by our notice of compliance that your notice to correct issued May 3 of 2012 has been answered appropriately. To whatever extent, however, the city feels a need, as we think is appropriate, to investigate our report of compliance, we would certainly be willing to extend for any reasonable period of time the city wishes to have, in order to permit that investigation to satisfy itself that there has been compliance. So we don't mean in any way to foreclose that opportunity, we're just advising you, the council, that we don't need additional time, in our view, to comply, for we believe we have done so. And then I will yield to Mr. Oliver, order to Mr. Terrasis, as is appropriate, to answer the specific questions. Thank you, sir.
That's fine. Identify yourself for the record.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor Cashell, Mr. Klinger, members of the council. My name is Frank Terrasis. I'm an employee of Trip Enterprises, specifically Warren Trip, who is one of the major investors, and that's Trip with an I, so T-R-I-P-P. I'm also here, actually with me, you've heard from Mr. Oliver, Mr. Cashill, also Kane Dutte, the CEO of Curb Systems, is here. We also have a number of the forty-three Nevada investors here with us as well. You know, there's been a lot of emotion and a lot of frustration around this system. Curb Enterprises, or Curb Systems, and specifically me. I'd like the council to know, Curb would like the council to know that we understand and recognize that, and that we empathize with the council. We understand clearly that citizens have come to council members and have had concerns with this with this system. Curb is committed to changing that. They've worked very hard this year, or for the past couple of years, but specifically since May, to turn that around, and they will continue to do so. The spirit of this presentation is one of collaboration and one of information sharing. One of the things that we want to make sure that we do going forward very effectively and efficiently is communicate with the city. I think, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned that a few times as one of the things that has been at issue here. So I just wanted to give that input. I'd like to start out with a brief history. The city of Reno contracted with Curb to replace its aging parking meter system, an inventory of approximately 1,180 parking meters, with a wireless multi-space parking system. There were many benefits to this agreement, including that because the financing was woven into the contract, there wasn't a capital requirement on the part of the city. So in other words, the city didn't have to come up with the front-end capital to fund the installation of the system. That requirement can range easily on a system like this in the millions of dollars. Another benefit was the overall capability of the system and the value that would provide to the city long-term. Another, and equally as important, benefit was the fact that this was a local company, funded by local investors, so there was the opportunity to support the local economy through job creation. Trip Enterprises and a lot of the reason that I'm involved in helping out Curb is, we're their contract manufacturing partner. So our local plant, we're looking forward to the day when we can hire people to meet the demand of this system's requirements going forward, and specifically, not just the Reno system, of course, but kiosks across the board for all of the installations in the different cities. Now, as a result of unforeseen issues, there have been delays. There's also been user dissatisfaction. So out of approximately, just to put some context to that, out of approximately 150,000 transaction, there are transactions, there have been 81 documented complaints through Reno Direct. We understand clearly that there are undocumented complaints, and unfortunately, the council has filled in many of those. Many of those have also been communicated through the media. As a company, Curb has been very responsive and has resolved those issues. We would ask going forward that the media and the council point complaints to Reno Direct so that those complaints can be tracked, that input can used to be used by the city and by Curb to improve the system going forward. That's what we're talking about here, is understanding the system, improving it going forward, and creating a supreme value for the city of Reno. Now, I was going to go through the time path on the extension. The 120-day extension was, as we all know, requested. Two short extensions were granted in order to collaborate and figure out issues and to get the system up and running and to comply with the city's notice to correct, but as Terry said, that's no longer being asked for. Additionally, as Terry said, Curb Systems is looking forward to working closely with the city to test and to confirm compliance, and will actively look to make that happen as quickly as possible. So the council have been provided with details regarding Curb's compliance, so I'll just summarize. And the document that that was provided in has this cover sheet on it, and I believe was delivered yesterday. So in the interest of time, I'll just summarize, though. So critical improvements that Curb has implemented to meet the city's notice. One, Curb has pulled nearly two miles of electrical wiring to connect kiosks to reliable power. This addressed the dark kiosks, frozen keypads, and slow credit card processing. Curb upgraded the wireless communication components. This address issued, this addressed the issue of slow credit card processing and the lag time for the city's handheld devices to display parking spaces as paid. Curb installed several firmware upgrades. These addressed customer complaints about ease of use and double billing on credit Curb identified and resolved two conflicts with Windows. One addressed frozen keypads, and one addressed the problem of screens displaying the Windows desktop. Curb has developed and tested, and partially installed, an optical sensor system to provide state-of-the-art vehicle sensing solutions. This has been presented to the city for their evaluation and approval going forward. And then part of that, part of that hit was, Mr. Iasi, your question concerning the security and such. We've not ignored that input, and that's part of the due diligence package and information that we've provided.
So all of your spaces, have all the sensors deployed now?
No, sir. There are 103, approximately 103 parking spaces covered by sensors now, so five sensors. But what Curb has done is, you know, based on conversations and based on the city's input, we've held off on completing that installation to make sure that the city buys into that.
So I want to ask you a direct question then, on the letter that we sent you. On B, it says that the company is contractually obligated to provide the city's parking space monitoring, which includes parking sensors. As of this date, the sensor installations have not been fully deployed. So you're telling me today that they are not fully deployed?
The sensors have been, I'll repeat what I said, the sensors cover 104 spaces.
Have they been fully deployed?
Terry, you want to take that?
For the record, Terry Oliver, in answer to your question, no, sir. They have not been fully deployed. And the reason is, the city has limited us to a local test.
I don't need the reason, I was just a simple question. Because you said it's been fully done, and then on A, it said that all the phases have not been done. Have all the phases been installed, all four phases?
Other than the sensors?
Other than the sensors?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to go down the list to see. You said you fixed the dark screen, and that's what staff will look at. Keypad inputs, you're saying that that's working, and we'll be able to check on that. Will not report, item C said that the kiosk system will not report to enforcement of parking spaces paid. Has that been fixed?
That's part of the sensor as well. That's called, referred to as push enforcement. So the sensors take data, evaluate when cars come into the space and when they leave, so...
So if that sensor isn't deployed, then also item C is not fulfilled?
Terry Oliver, for the record again, no, we are required to push paid parking information on the handheld devices to the city enforcement, and we do that. The problem that the city ran into before, and the reason for the notice to correct, is that we're having lag time because of the credit card processing in getting that information to the handheld devices.
That's not what the letter states. The letter doesn't state that. The letter just says, will not report to enforcement of parking spaces paid. It doesn't say timely. So, and you're telling me, since the sensors aren't there, you can't report them as paid anyway?
No, that's incorrect. The sensors have nothing to do with this particular requirement. We do send to enforcement information about paid parking spaces. It's on their handheld device. They have that information.
So, but how would they, how would you know if the sensor can't detect whether a car is there or not, whether it's, how do, how do you send that information?
Because the kiosk gather the information about which parking spaces are paid, and that's the information that's being asked.
So, so there's, we don't have to keep track of cars that are unpaid?
Not for this particular requirement.
In your opinion? I'm not agreeing to that. I'll just say that's your...
Yes, sir.
And then the firmware update, that's been done?
It will be done at the end of the day today.
Okay, those are all, that's just went through the, want to see their, it's all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
So besides this...
Could I follow up on one of your questions? The 103 spaces, there was a because, but we didn't hear the because, a limitation. Terry, I think you were going to respond to that?
Yes. Does Terry Oliver, for the record, yes, the, as we went through this process and as we were reviewing sensors, there was no product on the market that would accurately detect the vehicle presence in a parking space to the RFP requirements of the city. For example, the ability to zero out a meter and to do it accurately. We monitored tests that were going on in San Francisco and Sausalito. We conducted our own tests, and it wasn't available. So at the, what we did to solve that is we started development work with an optical sensor. We had a prototype in our trial on Ryland as early as 2009, but it took quite a while to figure that out and to get it working. We came to the city in, I believe in January of 2012, and we asked the city if we could put an optical sensor on the roof of City Hall in order to monitor some of the parking spaces. We worked with Public Works, we did that on the roof of this building here. We also then went to the museum tower, we went to the tower, the roof of the legacy resorts. We worked with the city attorney's office on those particular contracts, because at the end of the day, the city inherits this equipment, and the city also wanted to make sure that these contracts and these leases were assumable. But the city has told us very specifically to limit this to a local test, so we halted any additional deployment of the optical sensors at the 103 spaces.
And did you have that discussion with staff? The 103 limitation?
Staff gave us the input to limit this to a local test, and so we followed what the staff asked us to do.
A local test, what do you mean?
Well, I assumed it was the existing installation that we had up so that they could evaluate it. We have presented that to the city, and I know that John Flansburgh and Kurt Dietrich have reviewed it, but we're awaiting their evaluation. They haven't had, they haven't finished their evaluation of the system. So I assume that the local was just limiting us to the existing installation.
So you're talking about the 103?
103 parking spaces.
And so the sensors themselves, and I know that you were going to continue with your presentation, but I think it's appropriate to what you've already discussed. The sensors themselves, having gone from the PUC to the optical, it's because, did I hear you just say that San Francisco, New York, nowhere has it been determined that those are accurate? I'm guessing that that means it's factors of shadows created by bigger vehicles potentially passing by, not having parked exactly over the top of a space, or a motorcycle, or a smart car versus a three-ton truck, whatever those F-250s are. What are they, two-ton? Whatever they are. Is that the type of restrictions or limitations that you were describing, why they're not functional, the PUC versus the...
Yes, you're absolutely correct. It measures electromagnetic things and ferrous metal, and if you drive a Honda, you may be measured, you may not be measured. If you do what's called, in the industry, non-standard parking, which means you might be parking over the lines, so you may have two vehicles that are very close together, and the one vehicle departs. Because that other vehicle is too close, the in-ground sensor may detect that as still-occupied parking space and may not zero out the meter in that particular situation. So those are some of the issues. In parallel parking, and when there's not any non-standard parking, the in-ground sensors work fairly well, but the city of San Francisco and Sausalito found the inaccuracy rate to be too high, and so they had problems with it under the circumstances that you talked about.
Thank you.
So for the record, Frank Terrasis from Trip Enterprises. So those are the main things that Curb has done to meet the city's notice. There've also been a group of things that Curb has done to enhance the, to enhance the system's functionality and ease of use for the public. And they include, besides pay-by-phone at any kiosk and via the internet, Curb has introduced QR codes and near-field communication. So near-field communication is where you can take your smart device and just pass it in the proximity of the screen, and then it'll connect, similar to how a QR code would. Parking space availability is also enabled on the system. After paid parking hours, the screens now display free parking, so there's not the chance for, to prevent users from paying when not required, because I guess there was some of that. Curb kiosks now service 1,329 of Reno's parking spaces, so that's 149 more than the 1,180 space requirement. Curb's optical sensor solution, we talked about that, and what our feeling is and what it will provide, you know, photographic evidence, which would decrease the cost on the enforcement side, on the ticketing side, and, I'm sorry, specifically with the city clerk and municipal court. And with clear language and improvements to the credit card procedure, Curb believes that its kiosk, its parking screen interfaced is now the easiest and most intuitive on the market. With these technical solutions installed, the public, we're looking forward to the public now experiencing kiosks that are responsive and that are easy to use. The system upgrades will deliver the benefits that the city of Reno envisioned when they contracted with Curb. Additionally, the system will deliver the information that will be needed for the city of Reno and Curb to collaboratively manage this parking franchise to maximize its value going forward. As called with the, as called for in the agreement, Curb will work with the city to conduct a community campaign to demonstrate the parking system and how easy it is to use. At the request of city staff also, Curb has prepared a business plan that outlines and can help to guide the city and Curb in future management of this parking system so that it can become a more profitable and more productive franchise. This parking franchise has been negatively affected, like everything else, with the economy and with the slowdown of traffic generally across the board. But there are things, if we look at the information that the system generates, we understand which spaces are profitable and which are not, and focus efforts towards those, just like we would a business, towards those areas that have a higher return on our efforts. We can absolutely, maybe not completely reverse that trend, but minimize its impact and keep the franchise viable. You know, in summary, Curb is looking forward to working with the city to test compliance, to resolve outstanding issues on the agreement, and manage the parking franchise so that long-term, it can become a great value to this community and to the city of Reno. The Curb team, of course, we've answered a few questions already, but we're available and happy to answer any other questions the council has at this time. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your questions and your willingness to work with this company going forward.
Thank you very much. Any other questions right now?
Just one briefly, the, I think this is something new that Curb has implemented. If you go to the courthouse, let's say at quarter to eight, because you have an eight o'clock hearing, the kiosk says you cannot, since its parking is free until nine o'clock, it will not take your money. And then the problem with that is, if you have an eight o'clock proceeding, you may not be back to your space until 10:30 or 11:00, and there's no way to get back there to get the kiosk to take your money. So what's, and I understand this is kind of new, so how is that being addressed?
Yeah, I'll, oh, there is, I'll defer to Terry on that, he has...
For the record, Terry Oliver, yes, we have heard that request, and we would be able to do that. We think that that is a valuable benefit to add to the system for exactly the reasons you described. Somebody comes early, they're going to go to court, and they can't access the system until nine o'clock. We can go to work on that. I can't, without sitting down with our technicians, tell you exactly when we could have that finished, but yes, we think that's a great idea.
So you're starting on it? To fix it?
We would like to, I'd like to sit down with my technicians, find out how long, what the effort is, but I think it is just software writing that I don't believe is too big of an issue, but I'm not the tech... don't believe is, is too big of an issue, but I'm not the technician, so I can't exactly make that representation.
Okay. You know, Frank Terasis again, Councilman Hashif, I appreciate that question. It's, you know, it's a wonderful example of the type of interaction that needs to happen between the city and Curb to improve the system going forward.
Any other questions, Mr. Brazel?
Last meeting too, we had talked about, and I believe it was the meeting before that too, Curb had said that they were going to make the city whole and there were several promises for the loss of revenue, which that number continues to grow since the kiosks are inoperable. Has Curb approached the city with paying for that loss? I didn't see anywhere today.
We have, and again, I'll defer to Terry on that.
For the record, Terry Oliver, we've had numerous discussions with the city about the net revenue guarantee and we've also had numerous discussions with the city about the loss of advertising revenues that we were granted the rights to in the agreement. And we have not been able to come to an agreement with the city staff and that is the reason that we asked for the mediation. And that, that was our request for that because we'd like to resolve this issue as soon as possible and determine exactly what is owed to the city and what might be owed to Curb so we can resolve this issue. So that's, again, that's the reason why we asked for mediation. We weren't able to agree on the advertising offset. We weren't able to agree on exactly what's owed to the city and what's owed to Curb.
And then question for the city attorney, based on, on their letter and our notice to cure the default, just take me through the process. They have till technically midnight tonight and they testified here on the record that all of these things are fixed, other than I believe Councilman Aziz's question on the sensors. What happens if the systems aren't operable tomorrow?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Curb Systems is within their 120 days to cure. They've indicated they don't need additional time, so I take that to mean they will have their cure completed by midnight tonight.
Okay.
On the city council agenda, you know, since they don't need more time, so you know, the appropriate motion would be then that you're not granting any time. What that does at that point in time is the contract is still in place and the city can go and view and see what efforts Curb has done and determine where we are at that point in time. In addition, although it's been mentioned kind of as a side matter, not really central to this matter, they have requested mediation and their counsel here today has indicated they're also willing to talk in another format in attempts to resolving the other matters in the agreement, but that would be for a different item and a different day. So at this point in time, the city needs to verify whether or not Curb's representations are accurate and then we can legally tell you what the next step would be.
So Tracy, we can have this come back next council meeting because it sounds like, Mr. Mayor, there's not a lot we can do today because they, they have till midnight tonight to, to fix the issues. So Tracy, we can get an update next council meeting on where things stand?
Sure, this council has, has the ability absolutely to put a future agenda item to get an update as to where we are and you could even broaden it and include at that time some of the other issues if you chose to do so.
Thank you.
So then we would ask the city manager to have Mr. Flansburgh or one of his people go check all of the machines and stuff with Curb's people and make notes of any deficiencies or anything. Is that, is that the proper way?
And make sure that that's during the paid parking.
During the busy hours.
Yeah. Now is the time, since they, they indicate they're done doing their cure, now is the time under the contract for the city to take a look to determine whether or not that, that representation and acknowledgement is accurate.
Okay, I'd just like to have a Curb person with.
Oh, absolutely. And they indicated on the record they would cooperate with city staff, so I, I don't anticipate that to be a problem. And also as part of the agreement, they should be cooperating with us, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions right now from council? Mr. Davenport, whoops.
They sent out press release, Mr. Mayor. That they were, all the glitches are out and they fixed the system, so I'm sure they wouldn't mind if people went around with them yesterday while staff checked and see if they're operational.
Oh, they did put out, okay.
I was going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Let me have Mr. Davenport. I'm going to offer him a chance to speak now. Promised him one, so I'll give him one.
I'm sorry about the misunderstanding of where my position would be.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Klinger and members of the council. Actually, I'm not going to add anything but the fact that I am a frequent user of the Curb system. I have an office downtown, I'm frequently at the courthouse, and I have found compared to other kiosk-type systems that I've used over the past year. We were in South Carolina, we were in Savannah, we're in Beaufort, we're in Boston, Mass. This system, everything running well, is far superior to any system that I have used in any other area in the country. Truckee, California is another example, it's much more local, but this is a very good system and I want to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now close the public comment, bring it back to the table, Mr. Aziz.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just make the motion that we direct staff, starting tomorrow, to go verify the letter that we sent to make sure all those things have been documented or not documented. I don't think we should take a motion on if they're not asking for an extension. I can't refuse an extension or deny it, so there's nothing on the table for us to either, either grant or deny an extension, they're not asking for one, so I don't think that would be appropriate to be part of the motion. I just put on the record that they're not asking for an extension and come back to us at our next council meeting with that staff report.
I would second that, again, with the clarification that the inspections, inspection or inspections be done during the paid parking time.
Nope.
You know, not at eight o'clock.
Well, I would hope that they would do it several times a day or even a couple times during the two weeks to make sure that it's consistent with what's going on.
I don't want just three or four inspections, I want it to inspect it several, several times.
Right. And particularly the sensor issue, but that, just do what you've got to do in the letter to see if we're there or not on the letter, the demand letter we sent.
All right, I have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much. Should have cleared that, Mr. Cashel, because. F seven?
Because it was at 12:00. Oh, yeah. Larry's been here waiting.
Okay.
Yeah, we got to continue.
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought we did.
No, we can't because we don't have the agreement.
No, we did everybody. Oh, okay. Item F seven, continued to Bella Vista.
Mr. Mayor, would you just open the public hearing?
Yes, I should. Madam Secretary, of all the notices.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and again, one letter in opposition was received from Kim Rodemeyer.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Now.
Second, Sharon made the motion.
Do it, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Continued. Okay.
All right, now we're down to J four. Staff report, huh? Oh, yeah, pull. J five is pulled. We just did. J six is pulled, it's continued.
No, no, we want that one. That's F.
Oh, I'm looking at F, okay, J. Staff report. Bill request, yes?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager. For the record, Cadence Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. And at your request, at our last meeting, this item is before you for potential reconsideration of one or more of the bill draft requests that you approved at the end of August for submittal to the Legislative Council Bureau for the upcoming legislative session. I did make some updates to the staff report to speak to sort of the technical process for withdrawal of a bill and, and did want to note for the record that if we do withdraw, we are not allowed at this time, since the deadline for submittal has passed, to replace it with an alternate bill. So we would be reducing the number that the city is submitting for the session to two, or perhaps even less.
Mr. Doris?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just asked to have this put back on. I, after seeing the numbers on the rental car tax and how high we already are and getting some input from some legislators, I just didn't think it was appropriate to continue with this bill.
Any discussions? Ms. Ralston?
Sforazza, Mr. Mayor, you just, yeah, I, I'm going to teach you for the very last meeting how to pronounce the last name. You're going to get it just once.
It's about you getting married.
I know, I know, I should just let you, I should just let him, right? We'll have a vote on that.
That's right. Don't beat up on me.
Just giving you a hard time, Mr. Mayor.
I know.
Actually, I, I do think we should keep this BDR, Mr. Mayor. I think that there's different things that can happen during the session, things can change within a bill. I'd hate at this point for the city of Reno to, to pull a bill when there could be potential changes in this bill that would be up for support. And so I, I would prefer to keep this bill as we move forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Aziz?
Well, I just would have been in favor if there was another bill we could substitute for that we liked better, but since we can't even substitute another bill, it's always good to have something there that, that we might tie something onto at some point. I mean, it might not be for, you know, we can, even if it's not a lot of money, it's still a little money.
Yeah, I just, I just don't support increasing the rental car tax. I mean, we're number two in the nation in the percentage of rental car tax right now and, you know, an increase and we go, and we've got enough issues when we're trying to sell this market, you know, between our airlift and, and other issues we face when we're trying to sell this market. I, I would not support us adding to the rental car tax and being the highest in the nation. I, I wouldn't support it, that's why I wanted to pull it.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second discussion. No, I don't have a second, I just.
I haven't made a motion yet.
I, I thought you had made a motion. Oh, you didn't, okay. I don't have a motion, we're discussing.
I, I was just going to say, I don't think it hurts to ask, so, and for the reasons already stated, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of going forward. Let's just see what happens.
Anybody else got it? All right.
I mean, I'd like to hear from everyone else, I mean, if we're split on this or not, or, I just, I just, again, I just think from, from the perception standpoint, I mean, we're, we're already at 30.8% on the rental car tax. It's just, I, I can't justify asking for an increase in that.
Well, what's Vegas again?
30.1.
30.1.
Cadence, what kind of flexibility do we have in modifying the language if there's something about it?
Me?
You know, that makes sense, but it comes from a different source. Could we attach that on to this one even though it specifies rental car? If we identified somewhere else along the way, a different source to go after, not rental car, for the same functions, would we be able to utilize the bill for that?
Potentially, Councilwoman. There are some restrictions about what can be contained in a bill and it generally needs to be restricted to one chapter. And so if that, if the governance of whatever that other, that other form doesn't fall under this chapter, which is actually the chapter pertaining to counties, is, is where, what we submitted, it was enabling legislation for the county commission. So if it were some other form of revenue that is essentially not under the control of the county commission, we wouldn't have that ability. As we're looking to go in and amend the bill, we can amend it into a whole new chapter. But if it were something that is under the auspices of the, of the control of the commission, then potentially, yes, we could do so.
Mr. Guston?
No, I was just going to say that I'm a little late walking back in, but I did hear part of it. I, I don't think adding to the rental car taxes, where to place the, the request, I really don't. I think it's, I think it's very high now. I deal with people flying in and out all the time and from, especially from Arizona and that's frequently a comment they make.
Well, since there's nothing else to, that we could put in, I'm for leaving it and see if we could work on something or tie something together or do some negotiating with legislators and everybody else, because I just, we need to look at some stuff.
So you have direction to go forward?
I understand the direction to be to leave the bill drafts that we've submitted as they are for the time being.
And kind of see if you can identify something that could be modified in there for not the, the rental car, but another source. It's, it's, I'm sure pie in the sky, but let's see if we can come up with something.
Certainly, Councilwoman. We'll, we'll look at, at the other, at the other types of revenue that, that would fall under that same jurisdiction and see if perhaps there's an option there.
All right. Adam J seven. Staff report. Any questions for staff on J seven? Yes.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. City Clerk, Boardroom Commission Appointments, K one. Ward four.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, continued to advertise. Historical Society.
Or Resources Commission, continued to advertise.
Redevelopment Agency.
Advisory Board. You know what, excuse me, I'm sorry, I, I was.
Oh, you just.
Greg Ernie is due for appointment, he's the chairman, and I, I would move to, to reappoint Greg.
The historical?
Hystericals, yeah.
Oh, now you're going back to.
I'm sorry, you, you got me.
No, no, that's okay.
You got me.
All in favor say aye.
You can leave your fence up, I don't care.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Redevelopment Agency, Advisory Board.
There's no action on that one.
No. Reno City Planning Commission.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Ward one's the only ward that's not represented on the planning commission right now, and I'd recommend that we appoint Kimberly Locke.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification for future agenda items. Ms. Ralston?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put on for the naming of the field for Moana to be named after Richard Jay. I'm not talking about the whole complex, but the field itself. As you know, Richard Jay has been so instrumental, raising all the money out there 24 hours, seven days a week, Mr. Mayor, and I think he is so deserving of, of that field of being named after him. And so I'd like to see that on the, the next agenda.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Aziz?
I'd just like to get an update of where we are on the, the fire station, either next meeting or the one after that, just when we put it out there for someone to do the development.
14?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, to take a look at, we got a letter, and I think we all got a letter from a gentleman talking about the people sleeping permanently in a park and along the river. I think we already have an ordinance that you can't sleep in a park after 11 o'clock at night or whatever, but I don't think that applies to the river. And I, I'd like to have staff to take a look at that and see if that could, could possibly apply to the river also, because there are more than one part of town that, that, that's frequently being done.
Okay. Any other items you want to put on?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Zedra.
What I referenced earlier today, that 10,000, my complete discretionary fund be allocated to EDON for the, the downtown portions of, of their, their plan, their action plan, their strategic plan, and for the city manager to take a look at some additional funding to the tune of, of another 20,000 so that we're, the city of Reno would be contributing a total of 100,000, 100,000 to EDON for its operations.
Okay. Any other items? All right. Liaison reports. Guston? Zedra? Doris? Aziz?
Yes, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll give a quick update on RTC, what happened last Friday. Again, we had a discussion about the credits. Some people are coming forward and asking RTC to look into buying back credits for, there's about 900,000 of them outstanding and they would like us to purchase them back. A couple of problems are existing right now. Our attorney tells us it's illegal to do that. Our attorney tells us it's illegal to do that. The board asked for an opinion from the LCB or the Attorney General, and actually gave the attorney direction to go wherever he needs to, to try to get some second opinions about whether it was even legal or not. I asked our attorney and the director, if we wanted to do this, and if it was legal, where we would get the money from to pay this, and I think they identified only three sources, either the bus system, the paratransit system, or the slurry seal program that we have going on. So, one of those would have to cut, or all three, to even go into this if we wanted to at all. So, and in my mind, some, they just didn't want to even talk about that, assuming we wanted to do it, why don't we talk about what we would cut? So, it's being postponed until next month. It's gonna come back with more of an outreach plan, and seeing what's, what's gonna happen there. So, nothing was really decided, as I understand it. Dan, jump in here if I, if I say something wrong, but it'll really come back again next month with a plan for publicizing.
No, you're absolutely right, and Dave characterizes it correctly. And I was one asked about the opinion, because we do had, we had three letters from three different attorneys, and as you would suspect, three different opinions, but our attorney for the RTC said that he didn't see, didn't think it was legal. So, we're hoping that it, on the October meeting, we do get that legal opinion, if we could even move forward. I think what Councilman Azzi says is absolutely correct. The one thing that we should point out to you, as are the two representatives, if this would ever possibly go forward, and we had to cut those areas, we'd be cutting jobs. And that's, you know, that, where everybody's talking about jobs and being so important right now, especially in the state of Nevada, that was one of the things that, that we discussed about, if it has to come out of some area, if it's transit, I don't know how you could cut back transit. I mean, I don't think it's sufficient what we have now, but that's just personal opinion. But if we had to do the delayed slurry seal, that, again, there's a lot of jobs involved in doing that. So, it's a very complex issue, as Dave has said. I've had a couple conversations on the phone with people who are in the development industry, and they said they really, it's not their intention to do anything that would hurt the RTC. I do believe that that's what they're saying, and that they believe that, but we need to find, if there's an avenue to do that, we need to find out what that avenue is, and right now, it's not very apparent.
Okay.
A quick follow-up too, we were also addressed by union representatives, who said if we did this, we would be sued immediately, because that would, they would be perceived as getting around the prevailing wage, 'cause all these roads were built without prevailing wage, and if a government has to pay them back for that, then they would say, then the prevailing wage laws would kick in, and we would have to go back and find all those workers and pay them prevailing wage.
Yeah, and that's the third opinion from an attorney, which is absolutely correct, 'cause they were not public works jobs. So, you can see how complicated and sticky this whole thing is.
Good. Yes?
Dave, I just wanted to thank you, kind of for bringing this issue to light. I've gotten a lot of compliments around the community about you standing up for those folks at the RTC meeting, so I just wanted to say thank you. I think this is a big, huge issue, and on these RIF credits. I mean, you're talking millions of dollars, taking away from, and things, from a bus system, slurry seal, or people with disabilities who need transportation. And I think this presentation ought to be made to the Reno City Council, Mr. Mayor. I think this issue is big enough. I would like to see what the proponents of this are trying to propose with this, but I don't know if we can do that, Dave, or not. If that's a request you can make as a board member, or do we have to formally put it on the agenda and ask for the request?
I'm sorry to make this long. I want to clarify something else, too. When I said they could take it from paratransit, we're legally required to do paratransit service, so we can't take it all away, but RTC goes out, I believe, twice as much as we're legally required to do for that paratransit, so we can scale it back to the legally, it can't be gutted entirely, but it can be scaled back to where we're legally required to. Right now, we do more than we're legally required to do.
All right, any other, any other comments on that? All right. Reports from any conference or professional meetings, I guess that would cover that. Anything else? All right. Staff report, approval of reallocation of 3.7 million to the, oh, excuse me.
Oh, boy, Mr. Mayor.
I better get my, let me clean my glasses.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, so did I.
Yeah, we all did.
I just made $3 million.
Give me a motion here, bail me out.
Yeah, staff recommendation to allocate $3,749.88 to the access board.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
I wish you wouldn't look at your checkbook during a council meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion potential direct staff regarding maintenance standards, park maintenance standards.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I do want to apologize to council for, first, for even having to bring this issue to the council's attention. I would think this would be a routine issue, but I have been getting complaints, so I went out with folks and really looked at how our parks are being maintained. We heard it earlier in the public testimony at Plumas, a couch been sitting out there for a month. It's quite embarrassing, but I just want to go through some of these photos. This is DePoli, this is after Great Basin Youth Soccer put in $6,000. We've got a pump out there, and these complaints, I mean, there's email records that they have complained to staff about what the problem is, about the sprinkler system not coming on. They complained before the grass got to this condition. And now, we're stuck with this, and they had to put in $6,000 to fix it. Lynette, you can go to the next one. Again, this is after the $6,000. This is the condition out at DePoli of our fields out there. Holes in the ground, which is a hazard, again, that have been brought forward by members of the community. This is, I forgot where this is, maybe, Julie, oh, yeah, the baseball out at DePoli. I mean, just weeds and trash, and I'm just giving you a few examples, Mr. Mayor and council. Again, just the condition of the fields. This is at Comstock, we have some watering issues out at Comstock, if you go out and look. That's DePoli again, the condition of the fields. I believe, this is Echo Loader, just the problems with our sprinkler system, which has been brought to the attention of staff on several occasions. But we had just talked about this earlier, this is Echo Loader, too. We just used all the CDGB money to fix Echo Loader, and this is what it looks like. I can't even take a picture to kind of give the council, I mean, just weeds overgrowing. Lynette, do you have the other picture of Echo Loader? There's several of them, Mr. Mayor. But we've got to get a handle on this. We had the sheriff's inmate work crew, just with one call, came out and really cleaned up Moana. They went out there. But I, in my opinion, there's no excuse. This is the condition of our fields out there, and I'm just extremely disappointed. I think that there is communication issues, but we have people out there in the community that are willing to help maintain this. DePoli in particular, it's cost thousands and thousands of dollars. This is over a switch that staff was notified about, and they kept sending emails over and over again, the sprinkler system is not going on at DePoli, and literally ignored. Yeah, they're coming on, they're coming on, and almost all the grass was dying out there. Finally, they just went out there and flipped the switch themselves. And we've got to do something about this. So, that's why I brought it forward. Mr. City Manager, I'm very concerned, and this is just a few examples. I could probably go on for a half hour about some of the maintenance of our parks here in the city.
Mayor and council members, Bill Thomas and I and Julie Conway will, will work on correcting this, 'cause I agree, it's unacceptable, and we'll put a plan together and bring it back to council.
Can we get that couch out of there?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean...
Yes, we can get the couch out of there tomorrow.
Where the hell do you expect me to sleep?
And, Mr. Mayor...
So, Mr. Manager, we can move the couch to Mayor Koschel's house, so he can still sleep uncomfortable.
The pump that's in the, in place is only necessary if the system, when operating, drops below a certain point. If it doesn't drop below that certain point, it will not come on, and it's not designed to. The system, as designed and as operates, functions perfectly well without the pump being on, and it's not supposed to come on unless the entire system drops below a certain point. We've explained this to Great Basin Youth Sports Association several times. I don't know how many more times I can explain that, but the system is not designed to use the pump on a normal basis. It's only in an emergency situation.
Is the sprinkling...
And we had not had that emergency situation.
Is the sprinkling system working?
It works.
Are we running it enough, or we're not running it enough? What is the problem? Something's gotta be a problem.
We run the irrigation system as much as we can, based on our water window. Where our shortfall is, is balancing the amount of turf maintenance we can do with the amount of usage on the fields.
Okay.
Mayor, again, we'll look at this, I mean, 'cause clearly, based on the pictures, there's a problem. I mean, I don't know if it's a switch or what it is, but clearly there's an issue, and so we will address it.
Yeah, and Mr. Manager, you might want to pull all the email records that have come in, 'cause this was pointed out several, several months ago, to staff, the issues out there.
Okay.
I'd like, maybe we should just see if they actually went to Reno Direct, 'cause that's why we have Reno Direct. So, if they're just calling random people, that's not a record, so...
Okay, I'll move it. Let's go to, let's go to M. One.
I'm gonna need it soon.
Good deeds.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Mr. Manager, for the record, Barbara DiCiano, Communications and Community Engagement, my new name. I am here to present a couple of organizations that have brought great good to the area. And I would first like to start with the Active 2030 Club of Reno. This is a group of 20 and 30-year-old men and women who dedicate, who are dedicated to improving the lives of underprivileged children. Through fundraising, and donations, and grants, and a partnership with Kohl's Department Store, the group sponsors an annual back-to-school and Christmas shopping spree for children in need. They've also adopted Echo Loader and Sun Valley Elementary Schools, and members make regular visits to these schools for reading days and tutoring sessions. The 2030 members and volunteers took 150 children shopping for needed clothing and school supplies last year. So, they do a great deal of good for the children in our community. The next group I'd like to focus on is the Care Chest of Sierra Nevada. In 1990, three local pharmacists started a program to offer free recycled medical equipment to our underserved citizens. Care Chest has grown into a vital medical resource, providing not only the free medical equipment, but diabetes supplies, liquid nutrition for the medically malnourished and the elderly, and support towards independent living. Last year, they helped close to 10,000 children and adults through their programs. So, again, another organization who's doing great good. And my last organization is the Nevada Woodchucks. Do you know how much wood a woodchuck can chuck? This group is a group of woodworkers who serve our community through their annual toy program. They make and distribute handcrafted toys to agencies helping families that are, with children in need. These woodchuck elves work year-round to make thousands of toys like wood doll cradles, stick ponies, and wooden, wooden trains. During the Christmas holiday, they delivered over 2,000 toys to 15 agencies, including the Children's Cabinet, Ronald McDonald House, and the Salvation Army. So, with that, those are my three highlighted for this presentation. I'd like to personally thank all of the volunteers who worked so hard to make our lives and our community a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering when they're gonna, we're gonna get an update on my club, the inactive 50-60 club?
There was too much on the page to do in one slideshow.
Maybe I'll get them to do something, that you can report on.
Well, there's one special event that I think that we've overlooked, and I, I've got to bring this up, because it's one that we don't want to pass up. But tomorrow is a birthday for Ms. Sefrazza. And so, I think we need to sing happy birthday to her, 'cause we didn't, we didn't get...
Doesn't matter what you want.
You know, we didn't get the cake delivered or anything. Oh, it's Ms. Ralston, I'm sorry. It's Ms. Ralston, not Sefrazza. Well, happy birthday, Ms. Sefrazza.
Thank you.
Last year of the 30s. Jesus Christ, I hadn't seen that one in years. Well, happy birthday. Do you want us to sing to you?
No.
Oh, come on, guys.
I'll join in if you do.
Look at, look at Kate, huh?
Thank you.
All right. Chief? Happy birthday to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, just got forward.
You're singing happy birthday, aren't you?
Uh, happy birthday, Councilmember Sefrazza. Did I say that right?
Wrong.
Right now, the tweet boards are lighting up, I can tell, so. Four quick items, Mr. Mayor. One, we're in the process, we've identified some Trucky Meadows equipment. We are in the process of returning that back to the Trucky Meadows system. I want to thank Legal for helping us generate some documentation with respect to receipts and making sure that the equipment is returned in working order, so that we avoid any future allegations of mispropriety. Secondly, Trucky Meadows has forwarded a fairly lengthy public records request. Legal is assisting in kind of narrowing that down, 'cause it was fairly broad, and again, they're working on a reply to that request to kind of narrow it down. Third, Legal is also developing a reply to the Trucky Meadows demand letter for payment as part of the TRUP request for this year. And lastly, I believe council is in receipt of a, a letter received by Chairman Larkin with respect to negotiations on an automatic aid agreement. In his letter, he states that he believes that negotiations at the staff level would not be, would not be forthcoming in a, in a product, and has recommended that the policy-level decision-makers engage in those discussions, and I believe they have taken place. And that, that is the sum of my report, and I'll take any questions.
Well, my understanding, Mr. Larkin's request, he wanted them done at a public hearing, that there was something wrong, and yet he participated in a public, some other meetings, same type of meetings we requested for three months, so I don't know where he's coming from. Mr. Azzi?
I just, I mean, if I recall this correctly, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think you and Mr. Hashif met with them, like, November, December, January timeframe, for, for many months, behind the scenes, all legal, but you did it.
Yes.
And then, we got a letter from Mr. Larkin, saying that Mr. Brenneritz was not authorized to negotiate.
Didn't have the authority.
Then we asked him to have a public meeting, which we had a few weeks ago, which we tried to negotiate this, and they would not take any action on negotiating this. So, then we came back and asked our staffs to work with their staff. So, we get a letter from the county, from Katie, County Manager, saying, "We don't have authorization for our staff to speak with your staff." Now, we get a letter from Mr. Larkin, saying, "We don't want to meet with you privately, we all, we want to do it in public," which, what we just did three weeks ago. So, no matter what avenue we go after to try to talk to them, they tell us no, and come up with a reason why. I just want to put that all out there. I just want to put that all out there, that that's the sequence of events.
Although I thought the letter that, the email that Katie sent was just limited to baseball, right?
No.
No.
It was more than baseball?
That was because we had at our last meeting, Pierre, we had a motion that we have our staff work with their staff.
Right, I remember that.
And so, we got a letter from her, saying that their staff wasn't authorized.
We did get, because I have talked to Commissioner Breternitz, and that was the subject of Mr. Larkin's letter. He does encourage that to go on.
So, is Mr. Breternitz authorized now? Because before, he wasn't authorized.
I don't know. I'm kind of working through those, you know. The letter shouldn't have been sent.
I did want to comment on it, I just wanted to lay that out there.
Were you laying something out in January? I know Mr. Hashiff's been meeting with Mr. Breternitz. He's come up with a couple of things. I think recently, they came up with another proposal, and I'm not sure I understand all of it. Mr. Hashiff?
Well, I was going to say, there have been some discussions. I've relayed those to staff, to have staff to verify, you know, potential savings, for example, and we're working through that process.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to the discussion. For the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager, I just want to clarify, because there has been so much miscommunication on these issues, I don't want to further that. And I'm reading from a letter from Chairman Larkin, Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners, sent to Mr. Mayor on September 14th. It says, "Our board did not give direction to staff to negotiate these items, and frankly, we do not feel that further discussion amongst staff without new direction from the elective bodies can be productive." However, he does go on to say, "Commissioner Breternitz has volunteered to work with Councilman Hashiff to see if there's a possible basis for resolution of the automatic and mutual aid operating agreements, and as chair, I support that." So, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
It was back in January and February. Never mind, there's no sense in it. Let's just wait until a new group comes in, and we'll see what can be worked out or happen, and hope nothing happens. Anybody in Collin Ranch or Hidden Valley One Annex under the city, put a group together and come see us. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Councilmember Azzi, you requested some information on the new station? Is that the one that's currently under development in the south?
Correct, correct.
Okay, we'll generate a report for you, sir, and we'll have that presentation for next council. The other thing, if it pleases the council, I'd ask that maybe perhaps we reexamine the issue of this item, and maybe if the city manager feels it appropriate, and the council feels it appropriate, we bring items of significance when they occur and remove this from a standing item. If it pleases the council, I'm just going to put that out there, because this has been a standing item for, I believe, two years now.
Chief, the, Chief Moore made all these accusations early on. Did he ever get any answers that he was looking for, or did he figure out he had it? Because his people already had the equipment for a month or so before, after we had already inspected it with them, so.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, I believe the sheriff investigated and couldn't find any cause of, any substance, any cause to substantiate the allegations that were made.
Okay, and so, all of these new requests they're making, what are they?
These are public information requests. He's asking for personnel records, records of testing of apparatus, maintenance request records and those items. His initial request was going back to 2000. We've gone, we've, I believe Legal has replied back if they could, if the county could narrow down that, because of the time involved in generating those reports. So, and I believe Legal is currently going back and forth with respect to each item and each item that was requested. It was a simple public records request for some records that we have.
All right.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think that, the way the chief put it, very gentlemanly way, but to make him stay here all day till the end of that, he's probably got more valuable things to do, I'm sure, and he, because he's always here responsive at the end of the agenda, and sometimes our agendas go pretty long.
Why don't you put that on, we'll go back to the agenda, future agenda items, and you can put that on for the agenda next time.
We just take it off, I think, but to be fine, we'll have him on when we need it. I guess, I just ask about the synonymous terms. Are they synonymous? Automatic aid and automatic paid?
No, they are not. Automatic aid, it is a concept of service, and automatic pay is not. However, again, you know, if it pleases the council, I'll continue this item, and if there are any other items of significance, I will surely report that to the city manager and make sure that the council is made aware of that.
No, no, I don't want to go back to identifying. You know, one thing, I would like to go back to future agenda items. We requested an audit, and I'd like staff to look into it. We requested a financial audit of animal control. We did not get a financial audit from animal control, so I would like to know, put that back on the agenda, because I think that we should get an audit, financial audit of animal control, and seeing what things are being charged in in-can services and all those things. So, I'd like that on the next agenda. I would like to have an independent auditor. I don't like the idea of staff doing the audit. It has a little more credibility if they use outside auditors. And if we need to split the cost with them, then we'll find out what it would cost to do it. Yes?
You keeping this meeting going, so you don't have to go pick up that couch, Mr. Mayor?
No, I would have hidden back in the truck, okay. Give me my favorite, and yes, ma'am.
Just, if I could ask a question before we adjourn of legal counsel, I don't know if it's appropriate to do it, but just for clarification, when is the last meeting for the four of us? I mean, that's coming up. Mr. Mayor, I know we'll be here on the 14th procedurally to canvass the votes, but is it the 7th, Tracy, for us to really take action on anything? How's that going to work?
Yeah, we'll put this under future agenda items, because you will be discussing those and how you can bring them forward, so it's appropriate under that item, under the agenda, for me to provide a response. Usually, what the council does is you do meet as a body on the 14th, and you take care of any old business that may continue into that meeting. And then, after old business is completed, then the new council members are sworn in, and then, there is an exchange of seats, and then, any new business can occur at that time.
Okay. All right.
All right. My favorite motion.
Public comments?
Public comment, that's not my favorite. Public comment. Ryan, do you have any comments you want to make? Have a motion adjourned, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no.
We could have congratulated Mr. Dugan for all his awards. We could have congratulated Mr. Dugan for all his awards.
Yes, congratulations.
Oh, yeah, congratulate, oh, let's open this meeting back up.
I think we should, we should have done that.
Yes. Put that on a future agenda item, so we can congratulate him.
In fact, the RGJ picked up a lot of awards. Your favorite subject, Mr. Mayor, Star Bonds, he got it for.